Ordered this evening's meeting of the Winchester Select Board. It's Monday, June 7th, 2021. I'm Susan Verdicchio. I'm here with my colleagues Mike Betancourt, Mariano Golubov, Rich Mucci, and Amy Shapiro, and Town Manager Lisa Wong. We have a very full agenda, so I thought we would just get started with the land acknowledgement.
As one step toward carrying out our equity and anti-racism initiative, we acknowledge that we are meeting on the ancestral homeland of the Massachusetts people who lived here for thousands of years before European colonists began arriving about 1630. In the 1600s, the Massachusetts were led by the Sung Skwa of Misitak, called the Squad Sichum by the colonists, who led her people through epidemics, wars, and displacement. We acknowledge that Winchester exists within a region where lands were taken under unjust and violent circumstances, causing a forced relocation that continues to have harmful effects on native communities. As part of the town government of Winchester, we recognize our responsibility now to be good stewards of this land. And we acknowledge that Massachusetts, Wampanoag, and other indigenous people from across the country currently live in Winchester and throughout the state and contribute to our community in myriad ways.
Thanks, Amy. So just a quick announcement that we have meetings coming up next week on Monday, June 14th, and then likely on Monday, June 21st as well. We plan to hold an information session on the Waterfield Project next week before the regular meeting. The executive set the info session would be from 6:00 to 7:00. Is that right, Lisa? Or 6:30 to 7:00? 6:00 to 7:00? And then start the meeting at 7:30. The other thing I wanted to announce is that it's next week is the Chamber of Commerce Dinner for their Citizen of the Year, who is Dan Perrinck, who is retiring and has been the sort of hero resource officer at the high school for many years. So I hope people will come out for that. Does anybody else have any announcements? Anybody else on the board? Seeing done, we'll keep moving. I guess we could do some donations first and the town manager's report.
Okay, so I move that we accept with gratitude donations in the amount of $5,010 to the Council on Aging, $4,500 from the Winchester Mount Vernon House to promote socialization activities, and $510 for appreciation of services.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I move that we accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $250 to the Recreation Department from the Albionni Management Company for the 2021 Summer Concerts on the Common.
Second.
All those in favor? Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's exciting to have those concerts back.
Yeah. And I move that we accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $5,000 to the Health Department from Winchester Hospital, Leahy Health, to support it in our face.
Second.
And then roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Lisa?
Great. I have one appointment in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter. I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works Maintenance Special Equipment Operator to Chauncey Barbato, and respectfully request the board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Chauncey Barbato, DPW Maintenance Special Equipment Operator.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Anything else, Lisa?
So I just want to thank Meg White for providing this lengthy update of different projects. I try to do this about once a month. So it kind of talks about what projects are out to bid, what projects are in the engineering phase. So certainly, you know, this is provided to you, to the public as a status update.
Lisa, where does this live on the website?
So this lives as part of the board packet. So it's, this is a public document in that it's part of the packet. It also, this lives separately in that I have a whole section on the Town Managers page that has the updates to Select Board. And it will likely live in a third place, which will sort of have a separate project section, that something that we've talked about doing. So the, these will be static documents. There's two static places right now. The idea is to have a living document so that when you go to the website, there's a link. And then when these are continuously updated between meetings, folks can actually click on that and kind of see these projects and when they've been updated. And we had talked internally about just making it, you know, like separating it out as to, you know, like these are water sewer projects, these are road projects. So it's much easier to navigate. Then potentially, there would be like a link. Like, let's say you want to find out more about the Swan Street Culvered project. There would be a link there that would then take you to the page, the other page that specifically has that project on it.
Great.
Lisa, I have a question on the Lake Street Bridge. Are we, did that project get funded? Or are we waiting to fund it out of, or have Town Meeting funded either out of a stabilization fund or some other source?
Yeah, so I don't know if Jay can answer that or Mark can answer that better than I.
Lisa, would you like me to respond? It's Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Mariano, it was approved by Town Meeting. It was a borrowing authorization for the Lake Street Bridge. And we're looking at late summer, probably early fall before it starts.
But the, I guess the borrowing authorization included both engineering as well as construction?
I believe there, I believe that's true. There might have been a small engineering appropriation prior to the construction authorization, I'll call it. But I believe the bulk of the engineering and the construction was done as, as one appropriation in bond authorization.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we know if, you know, that bridge project would be something we could fund through ARPA as well? I know, you know, a lot of the Recovery Act is focusing on infrastructure. I know we have the borrowing authorization, but it would be great to not have to use it if we didn't have to.
Yep, so, I mean Stacy can also, Stacy Ward, the Controller, can also help answer that question. We just had a meeting to discuss the use of the ARPA funds and our understanding of the rating of the capital projects is that it's very specific to water sewer and broadband infrastructure. And even with them, then there is some specific exclusions, like we can't use it for dams. So I don't know how we could use it for that, that project.
Anybody else have any questions on this? There are a lot of projects. Well, thanks for having this, instituting this new process so that we can stay on top of all of these. And the public can, and the public can as well. So we have a Controller's Report. Is Stacy here? And maybe we could talk about that if anybody has any questions about her report.
Hey, everyone. I wasn't going to talk too long because I know you have a busy meeting tonight. So as usual, I just did a brief memo highlighting some of the areas. So I didn't know if anyone had any questions that I can answer tonight for you.
It seemed pretty clear-cut and, you know, under control as usual.
So it looks like our local receipts are coming in over budget. So that'll help us build some sort of surplus revenue. On the expenditure side, we'll probably have some good turnbacks as well. With the reserve fund is still at $565,000. We'll have some money left over in health insurance. So we'll finish the year off pretty well this year, I hope.
Yeah, so Stacy, I had a question because at Springtown Meeting, Finance Committee presented a pretty dire picture. And part of that was they showed a $1 million total for both reversions and, and additional revenue. And, I mean, you know, obviously Town Meeting's not the time to question that because there's not that much time. But I didn't understand that, given that, like, we knew pretty much in July or August that we underestimated revenue for FY21, right? Because we got a lot more state aid than we expected, right? Is that?
No, I mean, I think, but when they did their analysis and they did their write-up, we weren't sure how things were looking. Because FY21, we only had really 12, I'm sorry, six months of information. So it was really hard to know how our local receipts were doing. We knew what the state was going to come in at because the state made a promise. When we did the recap, we knew what they finalized their revenues were at. So we did estimate low on our local receipts because we weren't sure how it was going to look. But knowing now, you know, four months after all the budget prep, and I believe in relation to their analysis, it might not be as dire this year. But I believe going forward, if we don't use, if we're not cautious, we're going to dip into our reserves. So I don't think they were too dramatically off-base. It's just a matter of the timing. We're a little bit better condition than I thought we would be right now. Motor vehicle's still going to come under. So even though the pockets of money that are coming in over are going to cover that. But no matter what we get now, it's just going to build. So that's good news. And expenditure-wise, we never know what's happening. Until about now, we have a better idea of how things are looking. And as far as health insurance is concerned, we still have to issue our Part B Medicare reimbursement. So whatever I'm calculating, we'll have some left over, which it's not going to be as tight as maybe it was last year because we sort of budgeted a little bit higher for that. But it's, it's looking pretty good compared to what we what we had initially thought for a COVID year.
So what do we think our revenue surplus is going to be for FY21?
I would say, so right now, we're over like, we've got 350 grand or so now. So it could be to the tune of 500-ish, maybe?
Okay. So, I mean, last, okay.
Yeah, last year, we had a revenue deficit because we were a little bit low on our real estate, only primarily because people could push off their payments. So they probably paid, we collected some of that money in July versus in June because people weren't being charged fees and penalties. So there might have been a slight timing difference at the close of the year. And our local receipts were a little bit up last year, not by much, but it covered a lot of what we didn't collect in real estate. So, I mean, with, with all that's inclusive with this past year, I think we're going to finish pretty well compared to what we.
So when we cut our revenue projections for FY21 by 1.1 million last year, right, at last year's Springtown Meeting?
Yep.
I thought in July or August, we found out from the state that we were getting most of that, like 800 or 900,000 dollars back.
Yeah, the state gave us more money than we had budgeted back in the spring.
Right.
For sure.
So are we still, but now we're about 500,000? So is there some deficit on revenue somewhere else or?
No, no, what that means is, so the state gave us 11, let's just say 11 million instead of 10 million. And what we did when we did the recap is that we reduced our tax levy burden by that amount that the state gave us in excess. So there's no extra money anywhere. We just reduced what we taxed everyone to leave more on the table for this year for FY22.
Okay, so we, we used less of the override than with the extra, with the extra million dollars that the state gave us that we haven't planned for. Okay, but this year, we should be, so what was shown at Springtown Meeting, which was the reserves dropping down, that really shouldn't happen because we're already, revenue surplus is already about half a million.
Yeah, we hope if they're estimating a million, we got revenue at half a million and we have expenses that, you know, it's always an estimate as to where we're going to finish with expenditures. So it seems like we're going to meet that million dollars. So that's good for, for COVID, for a COVID year. I think we've done pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, Stace, do we, do you recalculate that reserve percentage, you know, at the end of the year, when we do the whole sort of end-of-year thing?
Yeah, when I close the books and I do the calculation, that's really the only time it's like a real number because it's sort of a moving target as the year goes on. So when I close the year, that's usually part of like the end-of-year package that I'll provide you guys in September.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we have a few minutes before our 8:00 PM hearing. Trying to figure out what would be a good thing to do. I don't know if the gentleman who wants to be appointed to the Middlesex Canal Committee is coming. Patty, do you have any idea?
I did send him an email. I don't see him here.
I was, I was thinking of going ahead and doing that. I've, I've met him and I believe he's actually a filmmaker and on the Arts Council, or the Cultural Council, excuse me, or has worked with the Cultural Council to make a, made a film about the Middlesex Canal. So it sounds like he's very well qualified. So why don't we go ahead and appoint him? Yeah.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Peter Engle Drum to the Middlesex Canal Commission for a term to expire July 1, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Maybe we could do the consent agenda.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Okay. Maybe we could take a quick look at the, the DPU letter, Lisa. That's something that came through from the, is an initiative, the Multitown Gas Leaks Initiative. And they focus on the natural gas industry and a group of towns around us. Arlington's active in it, Wellesley's active in it. And I think they've been working with the Environmental Law Clinic at Harvard to draft this letter to try and get as many municipalities as possible to sign onto this letter to then tell the state, the Department of Public Utilities, to move a little faster on some decision-making around fossil fuels and getting off of, getting off of fossil fuels. So Lisa, you want to sort of cue this up?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you already queued up, Susan, so.
Did I steal your speech? Sorry.
So that the memo actually has the letter from the various groups that are involved. The Multitown Gas Leak Initiative is, is a regular meeting. I believe Jay sends somebody from the DPW there to those meetings regularly. So that's their email to me. And this is their, the draft letter that some of the surrounding towns have already signed on to. So I'm not sure if there's any questions you have.
Well, I did call Ken Pruitt, who told me all about it, who is a Winchester resident involved in environmental and climate change matters. And he works for, as energy manager in Arlington. And I guess the, the state attorney general started a study to, you know, move forward with weaning ourselves off of fossil fuels, including natural gas. And this, this letter is telling the DPW to have, the DPU, not the DPW, wrong acronym, to allow municipalities to have a greater voice in that and also to just move this along, move it along and diligently complete this study. So I would be very happy if we signed this, or if we authorized Lisa to sign this letter.
I don't know if we had council review this at all either. It doesn't, I don't know what other communities are signed on. It looks like it just came from, you know, a few people, maybe, you know, since it came before us, maybe it was, maybe there's been a lot of other communities to sign on, but I didn't, I didn't know if it's worthwhile having council review it before we agree to move it forward.
It didn't seem necessary. I think the DPU is going to meet on June 14th or something. And they wanted to, you know, it's just sort of a, it's not binding us to do anything. It's just sort of an expression of our support for this.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I, I think we should sign it. I think it gives us a seat at the table with the DPU, which in the past, we, we haven't had as much. And I don't know if we will be able to. But I think it would be worthwhile to be able to have local input into, into the DPU decision-making. And so I think this letter just is asking for that. So, and I think it's very important that we look at how we get through a, a future with less carbon or with no carbon, not, not just banning it, but what the alternatives are going to be and, and how we can make it work for our local community. So I think we should sign it, or we should authorize the town manager to sign it.
Susan, if I just, I just have two questions.
Yep.
First, did our Climate Action Committee weigh in on this? At all? I mean, I assume they would want us to sign this, but I didn't know if they had seen it.
So they aren't meeting until June 10th? So they haven't viewed this as a committee?
Okay. And then my second question, just, just to follow up on Mike's point. Mike, I don't want to put you on the. Yeah, Mike, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have concerns that you think would warrant um counsel looking at this?
Well, I just, I I'm not really sure what it's saying and who else is signing on to it. So um, you know, it's um. You know, typically it's something that would get review if we're um kind of jumping on to something that is, you know, somewhat of, you know, political in nature. Um, I I don't know if it really. Is designed to get us a seat at the table, you know, and so it's it's hard to tell really what the objective is besides. It, you know, but the, so yeah, I mean, I typically, I think we would, we would have this, you know, reviewed before we signed on to something. Uh, and it looks like it's. Just kind of put out there by a um. A handful of people. So I I guess I just was wondering who else is signing on. Are we the lead town or are we, um, you know, where, where do we stand?
I will say I went to a couple of these meetings and it seemed like a group of activists and um. One of the select board members in Wellesley were very involved. I know that some folks from Arlington and the town manager there. Was at that meeting, trying to think of other towns. I don't remember any other, other towns that were there, but it was a fairly large meeting and it was at the, you know, the town hall in um, in Arlington. Lot, very large room. And they have, M A P C is also sort of helping to organize the the group as well.
Lisa, do you know if any other municipalities have signed on at this point? Have you heard anything?
Um, I'm taking a look right now. I mean, I know one of the people that wrote the letter to us is somebody on the Wellesley Select Board. Um, so it was a Wellesley Select Board. It was uh two people from M A P C. Um, and then it was two other groups, H E E T, and I don't know what that stands for. And then Mothers Out Front.
Um, i- if I may comment on where I made my comment on just that the letter was asking for municipalities to have a seat at the table. I I didn't attend any meetings, but I read the letter that we're being asked to sign, and it says. The municipalities respectfully request that DPU provide for meaningful opportunities for comment throughout this proceeding. Including providing input on draft and final versions of any report prepared by consultants in this proceeding. So um, I mean, I think the letter speaks for itself. It says municipalities should be considered partners in promoting and stewarding. An early, an orderly transition of local building stocks to alternative energy sources. So this is not committing us to anything. Uh, it's, it also says the proceeding should include proactive planning to ensure affordable, safe. Reliable and equitable service to public and private ratepayers throughout the decarbonization process. Again, I didn't read anything that would obligate us to anything or that would require town council to read. It's, it's pretty clear from just the letter of what we're being asked to sign that it's asking for municipalities to have a seat at the table. As the state uh figures out how to decarbonize our um, our heating system.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's committing us to a point of view, and I think that it's a fair question to ask what other municipalities are involved. I don't know that, you know, we're, you know, we want to be the first. Um, and we may not be, but I think just having an idea of who else is involved and what other municipalities, um, how other municipalities feel about this. I think that that's a valid concern or question. Is there a, Lisa, do you know if there, is there a timeline on this? Do you have a sense of what kind of their, their end, the end goal is for them in terms of timing?
Um, well, I'm going to guess they're going to submit it this week.
So they must have other folks involved at this point, if that's true.
I I'm sure they do. I mean, there's, um, I mean, the initiative is, uh, you know, has wide engagement from the surrounding towns.
Do you, do you think you could? Check in with um M A P C or um. The, this uh environmental law clinic folks um to see what other towns or cities have signed on to this. And if if we're like an outlier, or if, if, you know, just to keep. Would you have a little bit of time to check into it?
Sure. I mean, I think Arlington signed it.
Yes, Ken said Arlington had signed.
So do we want to authorize the town manager to sign it as long as at least five other towns or cities have signed it?
Well, it looks like the letter, sorry, it looks like the letter says that they're collecting signatures through June fourteenth. So, you know, that would give us time to vote next week at our meeting, June fourteenth.
I guess it would. That's what through means. I thought they wanted it before June fourteenth, but.
Yeah, so I can also, uh, I mean, the um Climate Action Committee can bring this up on. Thursday and come up with a recommendation to the board as well, if you want to do it that way.
Yep, that sounds good. That might be some, something that someone on the Climate Action Advisory Committee would be interested in getting more involved in or going to the meetings.
I think some of them already are, but again.
Okay, okay, good. That's good. I, well, see, I don't, I don't know that. Sorry. I didn't campus them.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got some next steps and great.
Okay. Thank you. So I'd like to open uh, move on to the Woodside Road, Wildwood Street Intersection Reconstruction. And Wildwood Road Traffic Common Sidewalk Improvements Hearing. I guess we have some town staff who would be presenting, and I, I think I see our um traffic engineer also on the list. So um, who's going to carry the uh, carry the ball on that? Is that?
Yep, yeah, I can get started. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, as you mentioned, we're here tonight for the public hearing to discuss um the proposed improvements at the Woodside, Wildwood Intersection. And then also along the um Woodside Road corridor. This project has been a very long time coming, and Erica will kind of go through the history. We started back in, I guess, two thousand seventeen with a general kind of study of some improvements we could do in this area. And we've been slowly working our way through to get to the point we're at now, where we have. I would say what's a twenty-five percent design. So we're past the concept stage, but we're not fully baked yet. So the goal of tonight's meeting for us is, is to present it to the board and to the public. Uh, we invited um a large area around uh the two proposed um work zones. Uh, and we're looking to get some feedback from everybody. Um, and then we'll move forward with some. Whatever, you know, whatever comes back uh from this, from the board and from the public in terms of recommendations. We can look to incorporate those and uh work towards finalizing plans over the next, you know, month or two. Um, so with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Erica. I think she has a presentation to give to the board. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Beth. Um, as I kind of introduced myself, um, I'm not able to share my screen. It says host is disabled. Is someone able to allow me to share my screen?
Hey, you're all set. You should be.
Thank you very much. Now I need a moment. I know we're a year into doing this, but I still. Thank you for your patience. All right. Can everyone see my presentation?
I can see it, yes.
And is it filling the whole screen or is it a kind of a funny view?
It's not filling the whole screen.
Give me one moment. How's that?
Better.
Great. All right. Uh, thank you for your patience. Um, and thank you, members of the board and members of the public for having me here this evening to talk about the uh Woodside Road and Wildwood. Improvement projects that we're working on. Um, as Beth mentioned, there's a good amount of history here on this project. I know um she's been working very closely with EverSource as they've been um doing their work along Woodside Road. Should be wrapping up soon. Any uh updates on that? I do not have today. But I I went out and visited this corridor back in two thousand seventeen, um, met with a good group of people um out by Big Winter Pond. And um talked a little bit about the project and kind of their uh wishes and traffic calming issues. And coordinated with the landscape design that was happening at Big Winter Pond at the time. Uh, we got some uh traffic data, um, some speed data, found that speeding wasn't indeed an issue. Um, and worked towards some traffic calming measures for this project. Following up uh in two thousand twenty-one, we got a topographic survey of um the area around Big Winter Pond. And the intersection of Woodside at Wildwood. Uh, we submitted twenty-five percent um designs for both of these, um, which I'll show you in a moment, um, to the engineering department. And I actually did a site walk with the DPW last Friday, um, met with a few neighbors and spoke with the crossing guard at uh Wildwood at Woodside. Um, some of the goals that I kind of hit on here, um, we're looking to stabilize the parking, um, kind of uh formalizing it along Big Winter Pond. Um, and I'll show you some photos, but uh Woodside Road is kind of crumbling into dirt um on the edge there, so we're looking to stabilize that a little bit. Um, there are some sidewalk gaps that we're looking to connect. Um, some traffic calming, as I mentioned, and enhancing the seating area, um, kind of overlooking Big Winter Pond. Um, and also incorporating some native plantings where possible. And at Wildwood, we're really focused on um resetting that stop bar at Woodside Road. Um, we saw a lot of people just kind of rolling through um and shortening the crossings where possible for safer crossings at Wildwood. Uh, so this is at Big Winter Pond, kind of looking along the edge here. As you can see, the sidewalk ends around fourteen uh Woodside Road. Um, and the photo to the right, uh, the photo to the left is sort of showing that uh informal parking area and kind of that. Pavement degrading, kind of crumbling into the um, the parking area. And you can see those uh utility poles just kind of laying out a sort of a edge line uh behind the the benches. Um, so the design here, um, as you'll see on the image there, I know it's a little, a little small, um, kind of funny when it's uh portrait mode on landscape. Um, but you'll look at the top and the bottom. We've incorporated a couple of speed humps um with associated signage and markings. Uh, to sort of remind people that that's a slow zone in the area between the two ponds. We're incorporating a concrete sidewalk along the big winter. So if you look at a kind of a cross section, it's uh the two um parallel uh travel lanes on Woodside Road. A formal parking area that is still um not paved. It will be um. Gravel burrow, um, then a four-foot sidewalk with a sloped curb. Um, and a four, four-inch reveal. Um, the intention there is that um we can't really raise, we want to not raise as much as possible and cause any um. Kind of grading challenges on the backside and have any drainage go into the pond. Um, as a note, the parking area, when it's formalized, um, you're not going to have that opportunity to kind of park on the edges and kind of spill into the road on either side on the north and south. Uh, so it moves from eleven informal spaces to nine more formal marked spaces. Um, this will stabilize the pavement on Woodside by incorporating a um, a flush granite curb on the roadway edge between the parking and the pavement. Um, and you'll see there's a couple of benches um incorporated into that level area. Uh, I zoomed in a little bit. This, I apologize, my graphics skills are are uh not great. Uh, but I did want to sort of kind of highlight where those utility pole edge lines are and kind of where that works taking place in comparison. To kind of give you a sense of where we're getting this space from. So a lot of it, actually, the yellow line there is where the um existing pavement edge is now on Woodside Road. So we're actually going to saw cut and kind of peel away that kind of extra area where there's kind of informal parking and pavement kind of flowing together. And it's kind of undefined area to uh just be two ten-foot lanes um with uh the saw cut, so granite flush curb between. And then that uh kind of formal uh parking area. And you can see that we're pulling back the benches. Um, I don't know if you can see my, my mouse here. Uh, but the current bench pad is here. We're actually pulling it back a little bit. So we're moving it away from kind of that sloping area to try to avoid some. Challenges associated with uh kind of working in wetlands. Um, wanted to uh acknowledge the sidewalk work and make sure that we were um coordinated on this. I um met with uh DPW Jay Gill um on Friday, and we walked to the site. Um, there's existing sidewalk kind of where that gray is. Um, the sidewalk repair that's going to be taking place by the town and under DPW is um the dashed blue. Which is uh replacing a lot of uh kind of um asphalt sidewalk with uh fresh concrete. And um the sidewalk, or the, sorry, the town is also committed to installing uh sidewalk from Chesterford Road. Um, down to the Culvert Bridge, which will tie in nicely with the new sidewalk to be installed as part of this project, which goes from the Culvert Bridge to the existing sidewalk. To the south on, at about fourteen Wildwood, or sorry, Woodside. Um, associated with that, we're also talking about new curbing. Um, there is some missing curbing on Woodside Road. So uh the reset curb that already exists is along Little Winter Pond is going to be um. Kind of pulled up and reset to be a six-inch curb reveal uh with new granite curbing um further up to, oh gosh, I'm forgetting the name of that street because of the P. Should have labeled it. What was that?
Pond.
Thank you. Um, and then uh to, on the big winter side, um additionally adding new curbing where the new sidewalk is going to go in from Chesterford to the Culvert Bridge. Um, and then we'll be putting in uh new granite curbing as part of our work again from the bridge to about fourteen um Woodside. Um, then here's the um, the intersection, um, just an image from uh walking the site on Friday, kind of looking to the north. As you all are aware, this is a very, a kind of a funny orientation of a layout of an intersection. You can sort of see in that uh aerial image to the right, the stop bar is really offset from the intersection. It's a good twenty-five feet from the crosswalk. Um, and the reason for that is because that wide curb radii and uh, you know, there's really nowhere else to put the stop sign. So that's where it is now, but it's a, you know, generally ignored, it seems like. A lot of people slow down and then don't feel comfortable. So they don't want to come to a full and complete stop because uh there's issues with sightlines there. And um when they can see a gap, they just kind of go for it. Um, so it's really informal right now. And then Wildwood, of course, is on a curve. There's an advisory speed limit of twenty miles per hour, but otherwise Wildwood is a thirty mile per hour. And um I don't have speeds on Wildwood, but I will say that it didn't seem that people were necessarily slowing down to the advisory speed of twenty miles per hour within that zone. Um, the design we were looking at um comes directly from that traffic calming study that we worked on a few years ago. Um, the idea here is to formalize the layout of the intersection control, so really creating two T intersections with Wickford and uh Woodside Road at Wildwood. Uh, with stop bars on both um guidelines through the intersection. So the uh, the double yellow center uh lane will be marked as dashed through the intersection to help to guide uh drivers to stay in their lane. And uh turn along the curve. Uh, this resets the stop bar on Woodside to provide an adequate sightline and a ninety-degree angle, which is what you really want it to be. So that stop bar will be more where uh the sightline aligns with where we want cars to be stopped and and turning and not kind of further back offset where they are today. Um, and it's shortened the crosswalk significantly on Woodside and Wildwood. Today, they're about, you know, forty, forty-five to fifty feet long, and this will make them closer to like uh thirty feet long. So it's a pretty significant um shortening of the crosswalk. Um, so something to note here, um, is we've talked, we're still in discussions, um, I did do some sightline evaluations. This crosswalk is um currently off, uh, you can sort of see it here. It goes. Um, it connects to the south side of Wickford Road. Um, I spoke with the crossing guard and um. Observe this uh students kind of walking the lynch in the morning on Friday, bright and early. And I made these arrows different colors just in case anybody wanted to kind of speak to it, but the blue arrow. Is kind of where I saw most students coming from. They often were already on the right side of the side uh street and didn't have to use uh the crossing of Wildwood. Um, from that direction, and that way I would say about probably eighty percent of the activity we saw um was coming from that direction and not using that crosswalk. Um, however, there were a handful that were using the, kind of where the red arrow is, and they were using the crosswalk. And um it's sort of a, not really, the way it is now, it's not really aligning with the desire line, because we saw a lot of people kind of doing like a big loop around the intersection. Um, and an interesting thing to note here that is kind of funny to see in plans, and maybe you don't know it until you stand there, but um. And it's not necessarily a safety concern, but crossing this crosswalk, if you're um leaving this kind of corner here on the inside of the curve. You're actually have your back to traffic on Wildwood when you start. So without the crossing guard, it can be intimidating to look away from where um cars are coming from as you're navigating the intersection.
Um.
Oh, sorry, what?
Yeah, could you go back? Um, why, why is the crosswalk here uh crossing Wildwood at an angle instead of uh straight? The one pointed out by the uh, the, the, the new one, the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Why wouldn't it be just straight across Wildwood instead of at an angle?
So we weren't reconstructing this side at all, and that was the intention here.
So that's, that's the existing rim, okay.
Yes, it is, and I don't think, um, so this doesn't have that same phenomenon, if you actually pictured being in it, you would be seeing the traffic in both directions. Um, so it's like the angle you want it to be at, um, but that's a, a fair um comment, we can look a little bit closer at that and see if we can.
No, and I agree completely with your assessment of the existing crosswalk, I cross that several times a week and it's, it does not feel safe at all.
Thank you. Um, I think I just have a couple more, so, and then we can open it up. Um, so just to talk about construction costs a little bit here, um, the intersection work, um, at the cost opinion at twenty-five percent with a twenty-five percent contingency is around ninety thousand dollars. And that includes uh police detail. Um, and Woodside at Big Winter Pond, um, we're at the same design stage there. And that work all in, including the two speed bumps or speed humps, excuse me. Um, we're looking at about two hundred and five thousand dollars, and that includes the police detail as well and a contingency. Um, and next steps is we're going to hopefully get some approvals on some of these, um, or at least acknowledgement and move towards uh the Conservation Commission for the work along the pond. Um, we're going to continue our coordination with DPW and other sources to make sure that all those projects are happening um in concert with one another and move towards a final design for engineering. That's it, thank you.
Erica, could you just quickly go back to the cost information real quick? So you're at the same phase of design for both of them. Okay. And that, so the, these estimates are not just to finish the design, but to do the whole thing.
Yeah, this is construction, yeah.
Yeah.
Already under contract with that design.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Susan, I would just note that this doesn't include um a construction admin um fee in, in here, so depending how. We were to bid and construct this, um, there would be an additional fee associated. With that as well.
And what does that person do?
So, we utilize construction admin services on all of our construction projects, it's the typically the design engineer um who's out there. Um, to help us oversee the construction, they're usually out there, you know, once or twice a week. Uh, we have job meetings, they help to manage um the contractor pay requisitions. All that, all that good stuff, and it's important to make sure that. Just because we have so many, um, as you saw from Lisa's list, construction projects going on, we don't have staff hours to dedicate. Um, to overseeing every detail of every project, so we use the design engineers to assist us with that service.
And, and that makes sense, to have somebody out there in the field seeing what's going on, okay. Thank you. So I, I guess I'll open it up for any further questions from the, from the board members.
I just have one question, um, Erica, if you don't mind going back to the slide just with the drawing. Thank you, so, yeah, perfect, so if you're like the, at the blue arrow, yeah, that, the other one was fine. Um, if you're coming, you know, traveling towards what Woodside on Wildwood where that blue arrow was. Is there any changes being made to the curvature of the road at that point, because I think one thing, I live right in near here, and one of the things that I see often is people that aren't familiar with the intersection. Will slow down. Or even stop sometimes as they're going, continuing on Wildwood towards Cambridge Street. So I wondered if there's any, is there anything being done there, or um. I don't know if there, I don't, signage probably wouldn't make sense, but I was just curious to see if that, if these, this, you think that that would. Change that, because it causes a lot of confusion when people stop or slow down significantly, if people are waiting at Woodside or even coming around on Wildwood.
So just to clarify, uh, they're stopping to a level of like interrupting flow because they're not sure if they're supposed to follow the curve or go straight. It's funny because I'm.
Yeah, or even.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, it's almost like they feel like there should be a stop sign that, because they're taking a, they feel like they're taking a left. Hmm. To continue on Wildwood. So they'll stop or slow down a lot.
I did see people utilizing their um, their turn signals at, you know, to stay on Wildwood quite a bit when I was out there on Friday as well. Um, it's funny because on the one hand. We want to slow the cars down on the curve, and at the other hand, I'm hearing that they're slowing down, so I'm not sure. Um, I think it's more like a confusion issue, um, I will say we're moving the uh street signs further up into the intersection because right now they are so far back. The people are probably looking, you know, trying to see Woodside at Wildwood, um, and it's a good, you know, thirty feet away from where the, where they will be. Um, I don't know if we could talk about like the signs being any larger, I don't know if that would help at all, or if they're just not prominent enough. Um, we're not making any modifications much out of kind of the area that you're seeing here. Um, so I don't think there's a uh. Unfortunately, I don't know if there's a lot you can really do here to, to make that more clear, other than to, for signage, really.
I mean, I just want to be clear, you're talking about people coming from like the Palmer Street ends and then. Bending around the corner, continuing out towards Cambridge Street, is that weird? Yeah, so I do think, you know, with the new curb being pushed out, the bump out here at the corner of Wood, like Ford and Woodside. It'll be clearer that, that Wildwood Street bends around, right, because they'll be, now they'll be like a big. Piece of land sticking out into what now is like all pavement, right, so people will be. Uh, it'll be a little bit clearer to guide people around that intersection, and Eric, I'm wondering if there's something we can do with like maybe some dotted. Um, pavement markings like you're doing in the center line, maybe at Wickford or something to help guide people.
Oh, like follow, uh, have the dashed edge line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Just to help guide people in the right direction.
Uh, what I've seen, and I don't know if this is the same thing that Amy has seen, is that cars coming. Down Wildwood from the uh four stop signs at Fletcher. Um, right now, it appears that their correct way to go is to go straight onto Woodside. And I think some people are confused and they think that to continue on Wildwood, they're making a left turn. So they don't have the right of way against the cars coming from Woodside. And I, that's what I've observed, is that people stop for that reason, when there's cars coming from Woodside. I think this design, by the way it looks, by having that curb bump out, which. Shows that the Woodside cars are, are turning before, they're not going straight onto Wildwood, I think. That would fix that, but there might be other things that uh, that Amy observed that is not, so I think that fixes what I've observed. Which is that people think it's an actual left turn that they don't have the right of way for, whereas here it shows that it's a continuous road.
Mike, you have any?
I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Susan, um, the other question, you know, I had was, you know, it, are we kind of bringing the curbs in and kind of shrinking the, the road a little bit, just because. One of the other problems of this, you know, intersection is just the. High rate of speed that people come in to it, and I, I just get worried about crosswalks sometimes are um. You know, they can exacerbate, uh, you know, a, a, a situation of safety if people are um not, not looking and not being careful, if they think, oh, I'm in a crosswalk and I'm completely safe, because. It, people do, I mean, and maybe the, the bump out there will kind of just naturally slow everyone down, but. You know, as far as coming down Wildwood um from, from both directions, it just seems like the speeds are, are really high that come through there, that I, that I've seen. Um, so people just kind of whip around.
Um, this does meet uh the policy with the town of uh ten-foot lanes, which is uh, which is pretty progressive, I would say, and does help slow people down. Um, I could look a little bit closer as to where the shoulders tie in, and if we want to like eradicate the lines a little bit further down and sort of bring it down narrower, but I don't want to. Necessarily uh create a scope of this project that makes it too much for the town to, to do.
No, that answers my question, Erica, thank you, yeah, I, I just, I was trying to see, to make sure that it, I could see the tens in there, so I wanted to see that it was, it was kind of, I think that that naturally will slow. People down, um, and it, it seems to be kind of the intent of what we've been, been working on lately to kind of. Visually slow people down by the road shrinking a bit, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Erica, do you think that um, there's something we could do with pavement markings that calls out the speed limit as well, because this is a twenty mile power zone that goes through the corner here that might. Help to highlight it for folks.
Uh, like pavement markings that have the speed limit in them?
Yeah, something like that, or, I don't know, something, uh, something additional to, to kind of draw attention to this being uh slower.
I can look into it, I know, something I think is kind of cool that I don't know, I guess I can't point to a study if it works or not, but those optical lines that you do on the side of. Uh, the side of the road, that they get tight closer together as you approach, so it seems like you're going faster and you want to slow down. It's a similar treatment that you do uh to approach a speed hump. They slowly get closer together and it makes you think you went, you're, you're going faster, so you start to slow down. Um, so you could do those on the edge of the road, approaching a curve like that, and I've seen them, um, I don't know if I have, I don't necessarily have a study that. Will show you that they work, um, but it's a pretty low, low-cost option that um. Certainly won't do any harm. So I can look into other marking options that might um kind of a- advanced markings that we could utilize uh for the location.
Thank you.
Susan, I just have a couple of questions, if I could.
Yes, yes.
Um, just, uh, Erica, looking at the crosswalk, if I'm crossing Wildwood Street and I, I look to the right. Um, and cars are coming from the Palmer four-way stop. Um, I mean, that looks like a tough turn of a head for individuals, it's almost like. The way this is drawn, in my opinion, it looks like that your back is now towards that Wildwood street area, is there? I mean, am I just misinterpreting that, or? Is that?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you tell me which way Palmer is?
So, uh, Palmer's uh. Down.
To the right.
Right.
Yeah.
Far right.
So, okay. And you, and uh, so standing on which curb, I guess, um, the south side or the north side?
Uh, south side. So, so I've walked up, you know, I think it was your red arrow, I've walked up down uh Wildwood Street up to that crosswalk, and I want to cross over. Uh, to get to Woodside Road, cross Wildwood. And, and I have to look to the right, down towards, you know, Wildwood Street towards Palmer, it now looks like that my back is. Kind of to that traffic coming in, just the way that angle of that sidewalk is at.
Um. Yeah, I see where, I see what you're saying, I do think it's less dramatic than it is today, but I think. Uh, back to the other comment we received, I, I do think that we could strive to make that a little straighter, um, than what, what I have it drawn at now. I'm going to be combating against where that existing curb is, having what, Woodside not get too wide at its throat. And not having Wickford get too narrow at its throat, uh, but I can probably look to, to shift it to be as, as straight as possible.
Okay, and then my, my next question is, do we have any plans for um any safety lighting for that crosswalk, like the flashers that we have at other locations?
I will say that there is a um, on that utility pole that's kind of uh right next to this ramp here, um, there is a street light. Um, that illuminates it pretty well. Um, I do not currently have in the plans, um, a plan for a rapid flashing beacon, but I'm, I'm open to that discussion for sure.
I mean, I guess I would be curious, the people that use this, you know, more than, than I ever do, if, if they thought that was necessary, um, for the off-hours that the crossing guard isn't there. And then my, my last question is just uh going back to, to uh Woodside Road in the parking area you're making by Big Winter Pond, will that be um plowable? Uh, I know you said, I think it's gravel or something like that, will that be plowable in the winter for people to park uh on the pond, because that is a.
So it'll be a similar material that it is today, so I guess, um, you know, be, it'll be cleaned up and be, you know, refreshed, but it's. Essentially the same material that you have out there now, um, to an extent, so is it, is it plowed in the winter now, I guess?
Yeah, uh, Jay Gill, we, we could plow that, it's gravel, but we could push it back to the uh, so where a few cows could get in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I do have one other question, um, if you could go back to the intersection again, please. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to open it up to the public comment um in a second, but I've seen some things come through the chat, and. I'm probably one of those people who stop or almost stops either going, you know, as, heading north. Sort of in the hour, with the direction that the blue arrow is going, because you feel like you're playing chicken with um whoever's coming out of Woodside, Woodside Road, are they going to stop? Is it, am I making a left turn, what do I do? Would, had you, have you considered putting a stop sign on Wildwood, so people do stop and wait, you know, and look at crosswalks before they head, continue. Out towards um. Cambridge.
Um, so it was uh talked about, um, I, there's a few ideas here, um, I don't think the way that we have it laid out. In this design I'm showing on the screen, always stops doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
The, the way an always stop would work. Would be, you know, you create uh more of a, a four-way intersection with Wickford Road. Um, and sort of have, Wildwood would become sort of two ninety-degree angles, um, and Woodside would become the straight. Um, from Woodside from the south. Uh, we would need to get uh turning movement counts here for eight hours to uh justify an always stop. You have to run a warrant analysis. Um, to see if it's justified, or you're not really supposed to install always stops without uh it being compliant. Part of that is that people don't really, um. They start to ignore stop signs when they're not, uh, when they're not kind of warranted. Um, that does play into a few ideas, uh, you know, would, would kind of create a situation where. Woodside would probably feel more like the natural straight at that point, and that might add some confusion to where Cambridge Street is. Um, and then you're also creating, um. With stop control on Wildwood, you could have um some amount of uh queuing starting to take place uh on, on Wildwood. So that's the, that's, that's what that process would be, um, I do. See that that isn't, that is a viable option, if that's what um we wanted to kind of study further. Um, but that's kind of what that would look like if we were talking about an always stop.
Well, I, I would say, just looking at the drawing, that the way you have the pavement extending, it's pretty clear that you're not really. Um, competing with somebody coming down Woodside. Getting into the, you know, getting into the la- lane of traffic, because they have a stop sign and, and you're going, um, and you're, you're on the main, you're on the same road. It's just making a very sharp curve. So I, I, you know.
Yeah, I'm hopeful, I think another board member mentioned this already, I'm hopeful that with this modification, it will be more clear. Um, and that, you know, stopping will become more natural on Woodside Road, and Wildwood will feel more like the main line.
Great, um, so I, I, I've seen that there are some people from T-Tech here as well. Um. But I'm inclined to open it up to the pu- public, because they, you know, people have been writing in the chat, and I think people have things that they would like to ask or make some um suggestions about. Um, let's see, if, if we, let me kind of, what do I do here, get out of full screen here.
I can, um, Carl is the first person who has his hand raised, I can bring him in.
That would be great, thank you, Patty.
Uh, thank you, thank you all, this is a, a great presentation, and it's good to be, um, you know, uh, taken care of this way, knowing the town's thinking so hard about the intersection. Um, I actually live around the corner, I want to second one of the points that was raised, um, around this being really dangerous, I see. I know some of the folks on this call mentioned, you know, slowing down at that intersection, I certainly slow down. But I think most traffic from other area, you know, that's external, which has become pretty common, is speeding through at. You know, extremely high speeds, and it's become extremely dangerous uh recently, I see people jogging all the time. Um, and I, I mean, drive by there all the time and I see that, um, there were, I want to call out. There were three, I think two major accidents on Wildwood and Yale or Wedgmere uh last summer, I mean, with, with one car overturned, so this is becau- you know, Wildwood has just become. Has, has, has become a thoroughfare that's become pretty um wild, actually. So, you know, again, I, I think the thoughts around the stop sign or what Michael raised, I think Michael said this about someone having to cross north on, you know, uh, crossing Wildwood, turning their. You know, head to see the traffic coming from Palmer, I think it's a valid concern. Um, I don't know if, if we can slow traffic, if, if we can put a four-way stop sign here, does it make sense to slow traffic coming, you know, into Wildwood from Cambridge by. Putting, you know, in addition on the, I think on Yale, we have sort of uh, you know, like a crosswalk. Uh, does it make sense to do the same thing on, on Wedge, Wedgmere or any other of the streets, just to slow the traffic down? So that's, that's one point I wanted to raise, and then the other one was, um, I, 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 you know, run on Woodside all the time, I'm excited about the fact that we're, you know, putting in a sidewalk, I'm assuming that will. Not take away from a running path, but I, I think the, and, and the fact it should make it easier, right, I'm just confirming that, um, but uh, otherwise, thank you for all of this. Sorry, that was the, I think the first part was pretty loaded, but the first, the first part that I was raising was uh just in agreement with any, all the concerns around speeding traffic, and. Just wanted to second that and say that it would be great if we can slow traffic down in general, um, on Wildwood.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Um, I see Ben Keeler.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. I'm Ben Keeler. I'm co-chair of the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. Just a couple of notes, obviously, and I won't take up too much of your time. There may be others that want to join and offer their comments separately, but I'll provide sort of formal response from T-Tech. I obviously want to thank you to engineering DPW Tool. And I also want to just recognize the work that the advocacy group of the Friends of the Winter Pond have done in this area. You know, certainly we're talking about improvements to ever source related and kind of impacted areas. So what we're talking about is not just patching the road. So that's great. That's, that's progress. And generally what we would say is that what's presented tonight by Tools in alignment with the vision of the overall master plan as it is, you know, from, from T-Tech's perspective. So that's great. Obviously, we recognize that, you know, the, the focus here is on big winter. That's great. But also, again, commitment on the little winter side from DPW is great. That's essentially where the kids, you know, walking to Lynch, they are going to use, that would be a preferred side. That's where we're pointing that new sidewalk. And so obviously, you know, having that same level of commitment on the little winter side as opposed to the big winter side is equally as important. So that's great. And we obviously recognize that this is an important first step. As T-Tech has provided many recommendations about this corridor going forward, obviously, speed tables are terrific. That's a, that's a, something new for the town. And we want to recognize that to get different results, obviously doing new things is extremely important. That's a good example of doing something different. And I do want to just sort of say that, you know, again, we talked about sort of the pillars of, you know, good transportation design here in town. We talk about multimodal support. This definitely is in alignment with not just car traffic. Safety and combinations. So, you know, we, it was mentioned earlier sidewalks themselves aren't traffic calming devices. So it requires combinations to really get that maximum impact. We, we are seeing that on the Wild, I'm sorry, on the Woodside piece as it relates to the speed tables. And I think what we're talking about in the audience has, has mentioned it is obviously the speeds that remain on Woodside. That's a remaining opportunity. But if we can see combinations over the long term there, I think that would be great for the town. Again, that's progress. And, you know, using our sort of design money to figure out how to connect green and blue spaces and offer better infrastructure for our town amenities. I mean, again, that's, that's a step in the right direction. So we really appreciate it. Two related comments of, you know, one, I know that we don't have the formal speeds here at our fingertips. We will reference those in our suggestions to the engineering team after seeing this, this final draft, but speeds have been recorded in that corridor going over 50 miles an hour. So obviously there's a, there is a speed issue here as well. And lastly, what I would just mention is that we're talking about turning our back to traffic here along that new sidewalk. And, and that's difficult to stomach for obviously putting in a quarter of a million dollars and then feeling like you're going to have your back to moving traffic. So I do think that, you know, we, we should plan to work with the town to improve that. I, I understand, you know, we don't, we, we really need to be careful as it relates to scope creep. I think DPW is committed to a lot here. But if we're going to put the money in, let's not point the sidewalk in one direction that doesn't optimize the safety, you know, so let's, let's take a look at it. And I would also encourage, you know, people to same way, make sure that we're using fog lines and painting on the ground to help encourage, you know, positive flow and to improve safety. So overall, you know, really appreciate everyone's effort and we're in alignment with some, you know, minor adjustments.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
I see Beth.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I guess my video is not turned on. At least I don't think you can see me. So I'm not sure if I can do that or if you have to, but my name is Beth Bookwalter and I live at 43 Wildwood Street, which is marked on the plan there. I'm right at the three way meeting of Wildwood, Wickford and Woodside. And, you know, just, I won't belabor the comments about speed on Wildwood Street. It is a real danger. And it's a real issue. And I think if we can slow the speed down on Wildwood Street, you know, that in itself will be very helpful. I really appreciate seeing these plans. I, I think the idea of changing the curvature on Wildwood Street and having the turn onto Woodside Road actually be a true turn makes a lot of sense. I, I do have some questions and I don't know if there's going to be an opportunity for answering them today, but I do question whether, when you're coming to the stop sign on Woodside Road and trying to turn out onto Wildwood Street, making a left turn, if that configuration is going to provide enough visibility for somebody at that stop sign to make that turn and to actually see the traffic coming up from Palmer Street, the four way stop on Wildwood, especially now that to make that left hand turn, you'll have to go across to crosswalks and, you know, be watching for pedestrians as well as oncoming traffic. And similarly, since I, my access is coming out of Wickford and into Wickford, I also wonder, and it's hard to tell from the plan, if it is going to be a clear sightline to be making a turn out of Wickford onto Wildwood Street, heading down to the four way stop on Palmer. You know, you'll be looking not only at crosswalks, but at people at the stop sign and then cars coming from Route three around Wildwood Street. So I think in concept, this configuration does look like it would slow people down and create a more defined curve. But I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to just talk about sightlines and whether the, the design permits clear views of the streets for that reason. And then my, my final comment is that I, I also wonder if this plan envisions changing the mouth opening for Wickford. And if there's any chance to address that, that would be very helpful. I hope that the town does commit funding to this. I think we're all very fortunate that we're still here talking about this as proactive safety measures instead of reactionary to some event that's happened in this area, which is, which is a real risk given the current speeds and configuration. So I really do hope we can see a commitment on funding to get this past the 25% plan.
Thank you, Beth.
Susan, would you mind if I chime in real quick on a couple of questions?
Sure, sure.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we'll run a sightline evaluation on, on both of those intersections before we move any further. We've done some of that now, but I don't have that material with me today in a presentable format. But there are guidelines that we evaluate before we lay out these final kind of stop art locations. And when you mentioned changing the Wickford opening, I just wanted to get some clarity on what you meant by that so that I can make, keep that comment.
Sure. I just couldn't tell from the diagram whether the, so you have it written down. I'm sorry, it's very small, but I think it says 40 inches wide. And I was just wondering if the configuration is showing that the opening would be reduced from 40 inches to something smaller to get out of Wickford onto Wildwood Street.
I'm not seeing the 40 inches, but is there, I guess, is there a concern about the, the width of Wickford now?
So underneath your labeling of Wickford Road, there's a parenthetical that says private 40 inches wide. And that it is a private drive that services the three existing houses there. It's not a town road. So I was just wondering if the plan is envision, is envisioning any changes to that private road.
Thank you. I apologize. The camera, all the images of people were blocking that part of my, my screen. It's 40 feet wide. And there's no plan, I guess, past that limit of work line, which will be regrading just a little bit like a driveway apron type thing to make sure that all the, the drainage and grading works so that we're not putting, you know, removing a catch basin. So we want to make sure we're keeping the water from not falling into people's yards. But otherwise, the work is kind of limited to coming out of Wickford, not really going into Wickford at this location.
Okay. And it's the existing width of the current opening of Wickford?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
This is Beth. I'll, I'll jump in. The, the curb line on the east side of Wickford is not changing.
Okay.
Yeah, so Erica shows it there. So it's just adding this new curb, you know, bump out in the middle there.
Okay, great. Thanks. I couldn't see. It was so small on the screen, but I appreciate the clarification there.
Sorry about the visibility there. I will just, not to belabor this, but the, the curb right here, right outside of your, I guess, your home on that corner, you'll notice is recessed. We're going to be recommending pulling that up so that it can help to, to find this curb and block water. But aside from that, that's probably the only change.
Okay, thank you. So we, we're elevating Caroline, I guess, now to talk, to speak.
Hi. Thank you so much for elevating me. I just have a few quick notes. First, I just want to say thank you for, to Erica for the work you've done. The drawings look great. And we're excited to see them. I wanted to just quickly turn the conversation back to the Chesterford intersection. We kind of glossed over that at the beginning. I see that the DPW is committed to rebuilding the sidewalk where Chesterford meets Woodside. We, there had been some conversation about realigning that curb so that the, the shape of that intersection would become a little bit more of a T and less of a Y. The thought there being that that would help reduce motorist speeds and reduce the crossing span for pedestrians that do often cross Chesterford Road there. So I was just wondering if there was any opportunity to consider whether that realignment could take place before the new sidewalk is installed. I do have two other points, but maybe I should just let you guys.
Yeah, that's, that's currently not part of the project. I can, if Beth or Jay have anything to add there, but
Okay.
Currently, that's not on the table for the project.
It's not on your desk. Well, the, the one note that I, that I did want to ask you regarding, again, back to Woodside and Wildwood, where we have that single crosswalk that's kind of in the middle and we've been having a conversation this evening about the alignment of that angle. Was there, was there ever a consideration to doing two crosswalk, two crosswalks, one on either side of the Woodside Road intersection? You would be crossing before you got to Woodside rather than sticking it right in the middle?
Yep. So we did talk about that.
Yeah.
The challenge there. So now I guess I'll go to this next one. This is why I color coded it because I felt like it's hard to explain north and south on this one. The, if you're coming from the blue arrow, going around the curb, you'd end up having a blind approach to a crossing over here.
Yep.
And the same would be true if you were the red arrow, you'd be coming around to a crossing over here and it would be a blind curve. So as funny as this looks, the sightline evaluation that I performed in the field and I, I hear the point about it being straighter. This was the ideal location in terms of sightlines for cars coming from both directions.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. I, I appreciate that those, yeah, those, you're correct. Those two locations would be difficult for sightlines. That's all I have. Thank you so much. If anybody, if Jay or Beth could, could address the the Chesterford intersection, that would be great. But otherwise, we in the neighborhood are really excited to see this happen and we're hoping for full funding for the whole project.
So I'll just say that within the money we have available from EverSource, there's not currently funding to incorporate the Chesterford intersection. I'll leave it to Jay if there's additional funding through DPW sources.
Yeah, there, there isn't. The only fund that I had was to do the additional sidewalk on that side of Chesterford.
I don't think what Jay's doing on the, I guess, south side, southwest side, challenging my directions would, would impede future changes to the curb line on, on the upper side of the Chesterford intersection, which I think is where we would probably pull it down.
So if we realign that, what you're saying is that you could just keep the, the new sidewalk that's about to be installed could stay in place if that were to get realigned in the future.
You know, I had to go out there and just double check, but that seems like a possibility to me. And I know, you know, this, what we're showing here is not certainly everything that we hope to do in this quarter when, when Tool did the the study back in 2017. We also had some improvements at the intersection of Woodside Road and Pond Street. And then, and then also I think Chesterford and Pond Street. So hopefully this is the start. So some future improvements that we can continue along in this quarter as funding becomes available.
Yeah, so that's great. I just wanted to bring that up just in case we ran into a situation where we would have to undo something that we had done here in order to move forward with the, the rest of the design heading towards Pond Street. So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm going to look to Marcel. You're a little faint. The volume is a little low, but we can hear you.
Sorry, let me.
That's better.
That better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Marcel. So I actually live at the end of Wickford Road, at the very end. So I also, to second Beth Bookwalter's comment about changing the opening of Wickford Road, I did have concerns about that. As long as the curb on the north side wasn't coming into Wickford Road, I think, you know, now I see, I think it really lines up to the curb that's in front of one Woodside right there. So as long as the opening for Wickford doesn't become more narrow because we all use that for access as a, you know, shared driveway. So I would be concerned that exiting Wickford Road would be, would be quite a challenge if that were to become more narrow.
Okay.
And then also, you know, historically, I do have some concerns, you know, I'm definitely all about anything that we can do to slow the traffic down. But historically, there was actually a tree island in the middle of this intersection. And I believe at one point the town had to remove the tree because too many cars kept on hitting the tree. And now we have this, you know, pedestrian possibly standing right, you know, I'm just concerned with as cars make this narrow radius to be standing in that bump out would maybe, you know, a scary scenario. So whatever we can do to really keep the speeds low, you know, as reiterated by so many before me, would be definitely, you know, a priority.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Roger had a question about raised sidewalks or, go ahead, Roger.
Yes, this is Roger Wilson. I'm a co-chair of T-Tech. Do you hear me?
Yes.
So the, the the issue of speed that so many people have raised makes me think of raised intersections. I think it's, might be a whole different thing economically to put in a raised intersection. But I wondered if that had been considered and, and, and how much greater investment that would be required. And then I have a couple of other questions.
I know that my team had talked about more of a raised crosswalk and not necessarily a raised intersection. It would allow for the ramps to not have to be there, which would kind of make that island a little more appealing and a little easier to figure out where we'd cross on the other side. It is definitely talking about tying into the, the curb reveal on the south side of Wildwood. So we'd have to be sure that that was even feasible. There is challenges to turning over a raised facility and Wildwood is also a bit more of a connector arterial than some of the other streets. So it might be a bit of a challenge to have a raised element on this. But it's certainly something we can look more into if that's of interest. It certainly is a, increasing the scope of this project, of course.
Thank you.
Roger, can I, can I mention something before you, you make your other comment? I think this hasn't been mentioned, but this area is supposed to be 20 miles an hour and it's already signed 20 miles an hour. So. So unlike in many other areas where we should be 20 miles an hour, but we don't have the signs, here we do have the signs. So I think, I understand that this is an arterial road, but given that it's 20 miles an hour, I think it merits looking at having the crosswalks be raised and also have textured, at least textured pavement to indicate, because nobody follows the 20 mile an hour there. So, sorry, Roger, go ahead. Any other questions?
So Mariano, I always go 20 through that section, but, so some people do. But the, the other point, another point is the kind of warnings that we use, sort of general caution warnings on the street. The, the, we're not consistent about it, but it seems to me that as a town, we should be consistent. And I didn't see whether they were marks, the triangular marks that warn of a, of a crosswalk, which I've seen used some places in town, like on Highland. But I didn't see whether those were used here, the, the, the row of little triangles going across.
They're called yield lines, and I think that's an easy addition to this. We're talking about markings that would help to enunciate this, the space and slow cars down. So I do think that's a good, a good application. You tend to do them on uncontrolled crossings. It's kind of the rule of thumb, so this is a great application for that.
Good. And, and, and I've also seen them used in Lexington just on, on traffic circles as you're coming into a traffic circle. And, and then the last point is in regard to Chesterford. When the town does the sidewalk section that we're talking about, I think we should seriously look at extending, because actually to make that more of a T, Chesterford, you'd want the sidewalk to keep going into what's currently the intersection. And I would advocate, and we can follow up with, with Jay on this, but I would advocate that we, we build that sidewalk further into the intersection before the ramp than, than the street is currently, in order to slow people down coming in, into Woodside. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Roger. I think we should let Erin Gogelin speak. I hope I pronounced your name okay.
You did. Thank you. Yes, we, we answered anything. My question is, I have two if possible. So I live in the flats, but my driveway is on Wildwood. And we risk our life every day just trying to get out of the driveway. And so anything that can be done, painting this, this, the crosswalks, I've seen other towns, I grew up on the South Shore. And in that town, the town colors are green and all of the sidewalks are painted green. So it's not mixing with the white of all of the other street markings. So I don't know if that's something that can be done, because I know money is obviously a factor. Speed humps would be preferred for me, but I don't, not to commend you of this project. With regard to this project and coming down on Wildwood, I haven't heard anyone mention about turning from Wildwood. A lot of talk of coming down Wildwood Street from Palmer and the four-way stop sign, but no one has mentioned about coming down Wildwood Street and having to take a left onto Woodside, which is already treacherous, because people come flying from the four-way stop from the Palmer side, come flying down and, you know, short of Roger, and thank you for following that 20 miles an hour, most don't, come flying around that corner. So when you have to turn left from Wildwood, you have people trying to run through the stop sign that's there and coming quickly from the other side. Now that that intersection is more, and sometimes the only way you survive is because the road is so wide, that people coming down the Palmer four-way stop sign side take a very wide turn while they're taking their left turn to stay on Wildwood. And therefore they don't hit you while you're stopped trying to take your left onto Woodside. I'm not meaning to be complicated. I'm concerned about that as that intersection narrows, that it's going to be even more complicated to take that left from Wildwood Street onto Woodside. Has that been taken into consideration?
I guess I was a little confused on how the width of the intersection.
Well, because you're adding that, if I'm, and I, if I'm reading it wrong, please accept my apologies. As, as you're adding that bump out where the three crosswalks meet, that's narrowing the road, correct? That's taking land from the road and building dirt and ground and whatnot, correct?
Yes.
So currently where that bump out is now, people come from the four-way stop sign and drive into that space. They don't stay within the, if the road's 10 feet, supposed to be 10 feet wide and you're supposed to stay in your 10-foot lane, they're in the outside where the bike, bike should be and so forth. And it's, it's very, I'm guessing you don't live or take that turn a lot. And anyone who has spoken already or lives in this area knows it's very difficult, because it's, you're also blind. You, you can't see the cars coming from the four-way stop sign who are coming very fast. And people are trying to get out of the stop sign at Woodside. So it's, it's a one-stop, but trying to turn left. I'm sorry if I'm not being clear.
No, I definitely understand where, what you're saying about, I guess, coming from Wildwood, making it left on Woodside. There's a little bit of a concern about sightlines looking to the, I guess, to the south on Wildwood and ensuring that you can safely execute that turn, correct?
Yes. You're so much nicer than I, thank you.
Yeah, I, again, it's back to the other comment about the sightlines. We'll have to run sightline analysis on all of those turns. I don't have those in a presentable form today, but I'll certainly look really closely at the ones that have come up today and do it. You know, we usually do that in, you know, when we take the next level of design. I can bring those to the select board to make sure that we're very clear on our side triangles here. But the intention here is that this will be hopefully easier to make turns here and everyone will be approaching it a little bit slower.
Well, aim into that and thank you for all your efforts. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. So I see Beth Brook Walter again, just if you could be conscious of the time and add what you need to add. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't intentionally raise my hand. And so just to give others time to speak, I'll defer.
Okay, thank you. I think it's Caroline then. Go ahead, Caroline.
I also did not mean to raise my hand, so I apologize if I did so.
No worries, no worries. Thank you. So in case anyone is wondering, who has typed something into the chat, the chat is saved. So we do have a record of all those questions and comments and suggestions. So at this point, I'm going to close the hearing. Thank you, everyone, and, and Erica and Beth for walking us through all that. Great job. And let's, you know, carry this out and work on it some, some more.
So Susan, I just wanted to regroup on one of the points that Mariano and Roger brought up. So we can make sure we're moving forward in the right direction. Is the board interested in us designing raised crosswalks and/or raised intersection at this location? I think it's certainly feasible. I think it will probably push us out of the range of budget that we have available to make the project move forward in, you know, the next, this current construction season, probably late, you know, late fall timeframe. That's certainly something that we can do. I just want to be cognizant of budget availability and, and direction that we'd like to, us to take it in.
Mariano has his handbrake.
Yeah, I mean, I think a raised intersection as a whole would be ideal, but I understand that that's probably the costliest option. I think a raised crosswalk, at, at least a crosswalk that goes across Wildwood, maybe not the other two, because I think that would make it harder for somebody that has stopped to then turn. And, and they're stopping anyway, because there's stop signs there. But the one across Wildwood, I think, having that being a raised crosswalk, it's already supposed to be 20 miles an hour. So I think that fits with a raised crosswalk. It, it also, I think, solves the concern about turning left from Wildwood onto Woodside, because now the car's coming from the other side right before you turn, right before they're supposed to hit you. They are, they are on a raised crosswalk, right? So they're either supposed to slow down or they're going so fast that maybe they'll just like jump over your car as you turn left. But, I mean, if they're going 50 miles an hour. But, and, and I think it's a lot safer. And also we can align it so that it's not at that angle, because now we don't have to worry about where the existing ramp is. So I think that also maybe solves a little bit of what Rich's concern was, that when you're crossing at that angle, your back is to the south. So I think a raised crosswalk there makes a lot of sense, and I would like to see that at the next presentation at least. What would it cost to do that?
Mike?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, my question is too, is we're kind of shrinking down the roads and the intersection there is to maybe see if traffic does just naturally slow down. I mean, I think we've seen that in other projects that we've done. And maybe the raised crosswalk at that location is something that we could add on later. I mean, it's a very high throughput intersection. So I mean, I, you know, I, I think what we're doing is going to have a huge impact and be really successful, but in slowing people down to 20, I mean, I think approaching the intersection from any direction, I think it's going to now be really difficult to really speed through there in the way that it had been before, where it's just kind of all open and large sightlines where people can blow through. So I, I don't know, I guess certainly seeing what the cost would be, but I wouldn't want to hold up any part of the project by kind of moving the goalposts farther and farther away, because I would like to see if we are able to get some more money to kind of handle some of the work up on Chesterford, you know, as well. And the other thing I was going to mention too is the select board has a policy when we do a school construction project to also trigger a traffic study in the kind of radius around the school building. So I think we'll be able to, as we're looking at the new Lynch construction, address some of the Pond Street down to Chesapeake, Chesapeake as it goes into Wildwood as well, because I, I think that it's a, it's a really high-speed area and I think it'll be even more of a cut through for people. And then the other thing too is just, I, I think we've seen a lot of speed lately with the construction going on. People are really trying to find different ways to save time and cut. And so with all the, there's a lot more cut-throughs coming through Wildwood, I think, than even normally. So lately that I, that I've seen, I travel that road pretty frequently, so.
Yes, Madam Chairman, it's Jay Gill in regards to doing any more additional curb in up at Chesterford. That wasn't in the budget. If we want to look at that, we'd have to have Tool look at it, design it, and then probably go to capital for that, those funds.
Okay.
Just, yeah. Just Erica, just so I'm understanding you, are you saying that a raised crosswalk in this area, because it's a turn, isn't a preferred strategy? Is, am I misinterpreting that?
Yeah, it's just, it's, I guess it's just not typical to have cars turning over a raised facility. They're usually done on straightaways, because you need people to slow down when they're going straight. It's kind of a funny thing that we'd have them turning over it. I don't think that I have any, you know, fundamental challenges with that. It's just not something I've really seen before. I do like the idea of looking a little bit closer at safety modifications here. I mean, another funny thing is just a raised facility like that. And I think Ben Keeler on T-TAC mentioned it as well. You kind of do these things together and not necessarily a one piece of a raised traffic calming. You generally want to do a series of them, and that's when you really see a benefit of slowing. This will cause somebody to slow, you know, directly on it and then kind of speed up on either end on the straightaways, which might not be the worst thing, because we have that advisory speed of 20 miles per hour, which is a pretty short zone, but it is certainly unique.
Is that because the fear is that people, I guess theoretically, if you, if you're, you're turning and you don't realize it's a raised crosswalk, you lose control much, much easier than a straightaway? Is that, that there, I don't know, it's, you know?
Well, just, just, I think normally speeding is usually a challenge on a straightaway and not really on a corner like that. So it's just kind of unique, that's all.
And I guess just my last question, Susan, is just for the public, I think, just understanding the timeline here of what, we're at 25% design. What, what is the next, what does the timeline look for a project like this?
So I think it's going to tend, depend a lot on budget, right? So I think the scope of the Woodside-Wildwood intersection that we have currently fits within the range of money we have remaining from EverSource. So I think that's something we could probably move forward with. Hopefully, you know, fall timeframe, construction-wise, maybe a late fall. If we are expanding the scope, that probably will kick us into the capital process, which will put us into the spring 22 construction season at the earliest.
And does that, sorry, Beth, does that line up with EverSource's plan to restore the road and pave?
Yeah, so we haven't, and Jay can jump in here too, but we have not heard from them what their timing is in terms of final paving out here.
No.
Our goal is to try to get the intersection done before they do the final paving, because we don't want to be cutting into new, even out there. Makes sense for them to kind of pave around any new curbing. But obviously, it's not the end of the world if we do it after they've done a final paving.
Any, any thoughts on the, the idea of a raised crosswalk?
Yeah, my only thought was maybe, you know, if the speed is more of a concern on the straightaways, maybe looking, again, I don't want to expand the scope too much, but looking at putting one in, you know, Oxford, Wedgemere, there's one, there's a crosswalk at Yale already, and then on Lawrence, so on like sort of either side of the curve, to slow people down, because that's where we see the speed, I think. And I think if there was a raised crosswalk, like on, coming from Palmer, the four-way intersection, where Lawrence comes into Wildwood, it might kind of alert people if there's that speed bump, that there's a curve coming. And then same on the Wildwood side, on sort of Oxford Cabot side. So just a thought, if we're not going to put it in the, in the actual turn, maybe the straightaways leading up to the curve might, might make sense too.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Amy, because I do think a lot of what we've heard tonight is feedback from folks who live on either side of this intersection and looking for ways to reduce speeds in those areas. And I'm not sure if it's a raised crosswalk or a speed hump or something we do in the future that we could try to use that to, you know, slow people down in those straightaways and then also to slow them down before they get to the curb. Might be a good solution.
Yeah, I'm in Oxford and Wildwood, and it's, it is like a racetrack.
Yeah.
Particularly going towards, obviously around the curve, going towards Cambridge Street, it becomes pretty, pretty speedy.
I mean, I think that if we do what Amy says to put raised crosswalks on both sides outside of the curb, then we might not need even the crosswalk in the middle of Wildwood, because all pedestrians would be able to cross to their preferred sidewalk before they even get to the curb, right? And so that might actually make it safer by getting rid of the crosswalk in the middle of the curb.
Yeah, that's really a good idea. And Amy, that, the idea of slowing people down before they get to the curb kind of makes a lot of sense too, so.
So again, I just, budget-wise, I'm not, we don't have the, we don't have the budget to design those features outside of the intersection currently. So if we want to, not saying we can't, expand the scope, just keeping timelines and budget in mind. You know, if we want to continue on the way we're going with just the intersection design itself, and then we can expand it to, to look at areas outside of that in the future, either through a capital process or if there's other funding available.
And not, I don't know if that clarifies your task, but yeah, that sounds good to me. Having the raised crosswalk in the curve does seem kind of strange, that people would take it at different, you know, two tires, one, one wheel at a time. I don't know, just having the, having a raised sidewalk, a raised crosswalk right in that curve seems odd. And having the two on either side make a lot more sense. So that would be my, my preference.
So just to be clear, if we keep, for now, if, for now, we keep the crosswalk as proposed in the intersection, straighten it out, because we've heard a lot of comments in terms of making sure that it's a. straightened out, and move forward that design. And then in the future, through other funding sources, look at adding raised crosswalks on either side of the intersection to try to slow folks down before they come in, or speed humps or some combination of other measures in that area.
And also, I would add Chesterford too, to that, Beth.
Yeah.
We don't have the money for that either.
Right.
Can we even look at what the race crosswalk would be there? Or does it, that, just looking at it defers the project? Because we keep pushing back on race crosswalks all over town, right? We we push back on the race crosswalk across, next to the post office. We are not moving forward on a race crosswalk on Bacon, where a child was hit on a bike not too long ago. We still don't have a single race crosswalk or anywhere in town. We've been talking about it for three years. I mean, I understand that we have budget constraints, but does it take that long to look at what the impact of a race crosswalk would be? Just bring us the option.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we definitely have to look at it. I just hearing a little feedback in terms of design-wise, whether it's the right fit. I think I agree with you that we certainly want to look towards installing raised crosswalks in town. I think that's a priority for us. We've talked about that with T-Tech as well, just we can certainly have Tool look at it, look at what the cost differential would be, and just want to make sure that this is the right location to kind of prioritize that.
Yeah, I'm not saying we are committing to installing it now. I just want to see the option.
Sure, yep.
Okay.
Sorry, so what is the action plan going forward?
They're gonna look at the cost of the raised crosswalk in the center and then come back and let us know. And meanwhile, I hope is to proceed with the rest of this.
As I think for the most part, I mean, we have a few comments, but I think the feedback on the Woodside Big Winter Pond improvements were generally positive and heading in the right direction, so.
And are you gonna bring that back to us for for more of a vote?
Well, I think it's up to you guys if you feel like you want to see that again, or if we feel comfortable kind of recommending what's been presented tonight with the parking adjustment and the new sidewalk. Again, the the piece that Tool's doing is just the new sidewalk from the Woodside culvert that goes up and connects to the existing sidewalk on the Big Winter Pond side.
Yeah, just let it know when I first agreed to do some sidewalks is really on the little Winter Pond. After meeting with the neighbors a couple of months ago and walking with them, we just, you know, listened to them. That's when we decided to do the big side of Winter. So that, that, you know, that's an added sidewalk that we weren't doing. It's gonna continue that sidewalk coming down Chesterford, going through the parking lot and heading back up to Wildwood and Woodside. So it'd be, you know, a complete sidewalk going from on both sides, which is definitely a huge improvement.
Yeah, and it just, we're piecing together funds from several different sources, and, you know, we're still at twenty-five percent defined, so construction costs are, you know, approximate it still. So we're probably looking at a phase kind of construction of all of these with the Woodside, Wildwood Street Intersection probably going first, so we can get ahead of the paving work by EverSource and then the as soon as we can after doing the sidewalk work and the other work at Big Winter Pond, and then the stuff that Jay is doing separately for his kind of roads and sidewalk money, so.
Yeah, just another point too on that, Beth, is those raised speed tables that we did down the center. Actually, this Sunday, we're gonna continue and add two more at that same location. So on both sides of both sides of the crosswalks are gonna be done. So we're definitely in favor of that type of traffic common with raised speed table and raised crosswalks. We're just gonna find the right locations to install them.
So it sounds to me like we need you to come back with a more clear proposal that we could then just kind of vote on.
Yeah, so we'll definitely do a little bit more homework on the Woodside at Wildwood Intersection. It seems like the Big Winter Pond improvements are generally headed in the right direction with the speed homes and the parking improvements. We're happy to come back and to the board with an update.
That makes sense to me.
I think, Susan, too, if I could mention, I I think it's looking like we're gonna need to get some funding in the capital queue to really take care of all of this, and it kind of just happened this way that EverSource wanted to send a line through an area that had been, you know, really neglected for a long time and is really high-speed. So we have a lot of different projects, but I think we started really with the Woodside kind of road corridor there, and just want to make sure that we're kind of taking care of that and have enough attention to it as possible, but and don't, you know, push off that. I mean, certainly intersection is is just terrible and really unsafe to be addressed, but I think that whole area is something we've got to make sure that if we we phase it in, we have we have things phased in at the right, you know, priority level. So I I don't know if we start together, start to put together a capital request as well for some of this in conjunction with our our next meeting, because it seems, seems like it's worthwhile for us to get this whole area done right.
Fair enough. It's a clarification. So the bump out at the intersection will slow down so that the cars are no longer entering Woodside at forty miles an hour, right? Because they're gonna have to make a right turn to enter. We're keeping the speed bumps and the curbing, right? That's on Woodside, so that's all staying, right? So cars hopefully will remain at the lower speed after they entered at the lower speed. The problem that remains is cars entering at higher speeds from the other side because of Chesterford. Right? So and just from Pond. So at some point, we're gonna have to address that, extend that curve. So is that everybody's understanding? Jay and Erica?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Thank you. So is this something, at least in terms of the Woodside stuff, that we will see before the end of the month to to vote on, or is that too aggressive?
So I think the end of the month is probably too aggressive. I would probably shoot for, I think you're meeting some point in July, right? We shoot for a July meeting with us to come back with some, you know, updated plan, certainly at the Woodside Wildwood Intersection.
All right. That sounds good. Do we want to move on to the the MS four presentation?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. Thanks.
So switching gears completely here, so as you all are aware, the town is required to comply with the EPA MS four requirements. We are just completing year three. And as part of that, we give an update to the board each year in terms of what achievements we are able to make over that permit year, and then looking forward to where we'll be headed in year four. We did get funding at Springtown Meeting to fund our year for permit requirements. And Jerry Schwartz from Western Sampson's with us tonight to kind of give an update on both the year three accomplishments and year four look ahead. So I'll turn it over to her, I believe. I believe she has a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Beth, and thank you to the select board and Jay and Beth for having me here tonight to speak. I do have a presentation prepared, so I can share that if you want to.
I already made you co-host, you're all set.
Thank you. I'll probably take a little. All right. Hopefully, everyone can see that, okay?
Good to me.
Okay, great. So just to, just to give a very brief background here. Again, this is a permit that regulates the town's municipal stormwater discharges to Waters of the U.S. These are all point source discharges. And again, this permit's all about water quality. Looking at source control, looking at ways to keep stormwater on site and reducing the amount of discharges that get to Waters of the U.S. You know, the original permit came out back in two thousand and three. And this basically, this latest iteration is a reissued permit that came out. It was final in two thousand and sixteen and became effective July first, two thousand and eighteen. It's generally a five-year permit cycle, although there are certain requirements that the town will have up to ten years to implement. And again, like Beth mentioned, we are in permit year three right now. We're actually fast approaching the end, which is the end of this month. So, so like I said, things have been moving forward rather quickly. So we're just, yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit tonight about some of the year three accomplishments. One thing that we've been working on is updating the town's written stormwater management plan. This is a document that the town was required to develop in year one of the permit. Basically outlines all of the permit requirements, how the town town plans to comply with all of the requirements of the permit and reports on any progress to date. You know, this plan is made available to the public to participate in implementation of the plan. It's available on the town's website right now. We're currently in the process of updating the plan. But in the future, if the town were to get audited by EPA at some point, you know, the town would be providing this document to EPA to document basically compliance with the permit. And again, it's, like I said, this is in the process of being updated and will be posted, the updated version will be posted to the town's website. So there are, there are basically six main elements of the program. They're called minimum control measures, and so I just wanted to kind of walk through each minimum control measure and just kind of update, update the public on what the town has been doing to comply with those minimum control measures during permit year three. The first one is public education and outreach. There's a lot of, there's four targeted audiences that the town needs to reach out to as part of the permit. Residential, commercial, industrial, and developers, construction. You know, the town has been working to update their website. Last year, they pretty much did a pretty good overhaul of the website, putting specific messages on the website to each of these audiences. I mean, obviously, things look a little bit different this year with with COVID. So, you know, it's, it's been more about, you know, press releases, doing some targeted mailings. They are making some brochures available in some public places, especially now that things are opening up. And the bulk of these brochures are, and messages in general are focusing on different, you know, stormwater pollutants, some of which are, you know, common pollutant sediment, you know, chloride and other items that are maybe a little more specific to Winchester in terms of certain impairments related to receiving water bodies. And those have to do with nutrient impairments, phosphorus, and then also bacteria. The second minimum control measure is public participation and involvement. And as I said, due to COVID, this has looked a little bit different this year, not, not quite as many opportunities, you know, to engage the public and trying, I guess, to engage the public in different ways. The town has continued to hold their hazardous waste collection day twice per year. The town has also participated in some self-guided cleanup, so usually the Mystic River Watershed Association, you know, organizes community cleanups, and like they, they still did go forward this year around Earth Day, but were more like self-guided smaller groups due to COVID. The town continues to participate in the Mystic River Steering Committee, goes to, I believe, monthly meetings related to that. And again, posting the stormwater management plan and also making annual reports available on the town's website and other documentation that's been produced as part of this process for compliance is also obviously another way that the town is looking to engage the public. Minimum control measure three is illicit discharge detection and elimination. This is all about looking at ways that non-stormwater discharges are getting into the town's drainage system. The town did a number of dry weather outfall screenings in year two, looking at dry weather flow when it's not raining and you're seeing a discharge at the outfall, testing that discharge as required by the permit and trying to, trying to come up with a sense for what, what could be the source of that discharge, whether it's just groundwater, or if it could be, you know, related to the sounds, the town's water distribution system, or if it's, it really is an illicit discharge in the sense that it's could be related to the, you know, the sewer system getting into the drainage system. So the town in year two started investigating individual catchments. These are individual drainage areas made up of, you know, the catch basins, the piping, manholes that go to a particular outfall or discharge point that gets into a receiving water. So the town has been making great progress with this effort. It's a, it's a pretty large effort in the sense that the entire town's drainage system essentially is being investigated as part of this. And, you know, the town has roughly a hundred and fifty regulated outfalls, so that equates to about a hundred and fifty catchments. We've been able to look at about twenty-five or so catchments, you know, a year so far, which I think has been great. We did another twenty-five this year. Some of that investigation work is is active in terms of, you know, where we might have had evidence of likely sewer input based on some of the laboratory analysis that's been done, where we've collected dry weather samples. So again, trying to pinpoint potential sources there. Also started doing some wet weather outfall sampling, so the town also needs to sample their outfalls during wet weather. Again, that's a hundred and fifty outfalls that need to be sampled. And again, that, that, the town does have the catchment investigations and the wet weather outfall sampling the town has until the end of year ten. So, you know, a little bit more time beyond the the five years, but obviously, if you do find something, then there's corrective measures that need to be put into place to eliminate that that discharge. So there's a lot of follow-on work. So I think it's great that the town is has a good, you know, kind of a good start on that right now. Things are going well. In the same token, there's also training that's done annually to basically train municipal employees on how to detect illicit discharges, especially those employees that work frequently in the field with the drainage system, the sewer system. That training this year was a pre-recorded training that we produced for the town. Just because of COVID, things looked a little different for training, but we still still able to do that training. Other minimum control measure number four is construction site runoff control. So this is looking at sources of, you know, stormwater contamination at construction sites. Basically, this year, the town is actually working on updating their existing rules and regulations that regulate use of the sewer and storm drain system. There's an item that they're tightening up related to waste control on construction sites. The town also continued to do tracking of site plan reviews, inspections, any enforcement actions that were taken. All of this, these items get reported to EPA annually in the town's annual report. Minimum control measure number five is post-construction stormwater management. So this looks at the actual design of stormwater treatment systems, and then also the long-term operation and maintenance of these systems after they're constructed, to make sure that they're continuing to function as they should. So again, this is again, part of that same initiative that the town is is currently working with their attorneys to update these rules and regulations that are currently in place to add these additional requirements. Looking at, you know, implementing low-impact development design strategies wherever possible. That's incorporating green infrastructure, trying to reduce impervious area, ensuring compliance for with the Mass Stormwater Handbook, and then meeting certain pollutant removal efficiencies as they relate to total suspended solids and total phosphorus, which even go beyond the stormwater standards. And then again, so the town, the town is tributary, obviously, to the Mystic River, which has an impairment for phosphorus. So there is a requirement that the town really look at having developers utilize different best management practices that are looking at more like infiltration. So they're, you know, reducing phosphorus discharges. But again, this is something Beth has actually been working closely with the town's attorneys on to make these updates, and this is something that will be coming again back before the board for approval, these updates to these regulations in the very near future. The last minimum control measure is pollution prevention, good housekeeping. The town has really done a great job with their catch basin cleaning. I think when we kind of started looking to comply with the permit, initially, the town was probably cleaning about twenty percent of their catch basins a year. And now I think we're at close to two-thirds or even a little more than that. The town has been putting out a contract annually to have an outside contractor clean some of the basins and collect the data that's needed to build what's called an optimization plan to meet the permit requirements with respect to frequency of cleaning. And the town is also has someone fully allocated town staff to actually clean and catch basins as well, so a lot more emphasis is been placed on that, as, as, you know, required by the permit and as needed to collect this data that's needed. The town continues to sweep all of their streets twice per year. Then there's a requirement to inspect and maintain stormwater BMPs. These are the structural control measures that are in place to remove pollutants from discharges. So that would be any rain gardens that the town has, infiltration basins, you know, proprietary-type storm scepters, anything that's focused on removal of pollutants, and just making sure, like I said, that there's long-term you know, they're functioning and continuing to function, continuing to be maintained on an annual basis. In permit year two, there was stormwater pollution prevention plans that were developed for two of the town's facilities. This was the DPW facility and the transfer station. These are classified as waste handling facilities under the MS four permit. So pollution prevention plans were were developed and put in place. And the permit requires continued training on those plan, plans for municipal staff, and then also quarterly inspections. So we go out and inspect, you know, just the areas of the the facility, looking at source control measures that are in place, any opportunities for contaminants to get into stormwater and leave the site, and then looking at the stormwater control measures that are actually in place, the BMPs and how they're functioning. So all that gets logged, in case there's any, you know, follow-on items that need to get done. There's a lot of records and reporting associated with compliance with the permit. And again, like I, I did say before, like if the town were to get audited by EPA, there's a lot of documentation that the town would need to produce in terms of how they've been complying with the permit. The updated stormwater management plan, we're looking to post that for public comment by June 9th. And that'll be available to the public for a two-week period before that plan is, is finalized within, to address any comments received from the public. And then the town's annual report for year three, that's due 90 days after the end of permit year three. So roughly September 28th, 2021, that report will be submitted to EPA along with certain documentation that's required. They like to see all of the results of the sampling work that's done, you know, during that permit year. So that's get submitted as well. Other stuff they don't require submission of, but the items again, that the town would retain and submit in the event of an audit. So looking ahead for year four. Again, we're already doing wet weather outfall sampling. We'll be continuing that initiative. Also continuing to investigate additional catchments for any sources of illicit discharges. We're also going to be developing a phosphorus source identification report. And again, this is related to the fact that the Mystic River is impaired for phosphorus. So it's really a town-wide assessment that looks at potential catchments that are high sources of phosphorus loadings to receiving waters. And then any opportunity to basically retrofit those drainage systems to infiltrate more stormwater where, where the town can and where that's feasible based on certain conditions at those sites and whether, you know, for swap would be like the, whether the soils are amenable to infiltration, which is generally the preferred BMP for removal of phosphorus. But that'll be, that'll be like this, the town-wide report that'll kind of set the goals for implementing future projects for retrofit opportunities in, in future years of the permit. We'll also be looking at kind of the town's regulations with respect to, you know, their subdivision regs, site plan review regs, looking at the creation of impervious cover and opportunities to reduce impervious cover when it comes to different types of construction related to, you know, roadways, parking lots, that type of thing. Looking at opportunities again to incorporate green infrastructure, looking at more infiltration. And then also thinking about other retrofit projects that the town could do, not right away, but maybe in the future as opportunities present, present themselves. As different, you know, different capital projects that might come down, down the road that might impact, you know, drainage, stormwater on a roadway or a site. You know, where there's an opportunity to, to modify the existing, you know, stormwater conveyance system on that site and infiltrate more of the stormwater. We're looking to continue gather additional data to build the catch basin cleaning optimization plan. I know the towns has set aside money again to get a contractor on board in the upcoming fiscal year to continue to clean catch basins and, and collect that data that's needed. The town inspects and maintains their own BMPs and will be continuing that, that initiative next year as well. And again, all the training and the inspections that are required, those are, those are annual requirements. So again, the town will continue with those items as well as required by the permit and keep, keep documentation confirming that the training and inspections have been completed that are required. So with that, I am happy to, happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. I have to say. Anyone have any quick questions? I have one from my neighbor, which is about where the phosphorus is coming from and does it have anything to do with the, like lawn care products that we're putting on our lawns?
Absolutely. No, yep. Fertilizers are definitely a, a large source of phosphorus. But there are certain restrictions currently in place in Massachusetts that limit the sale of fertilizers containing phosphorus.
There are just also naturally occurring sources of phosphorus. So like leaf litter is a big one, right? Exactly. So that's why there's such a yard waste. That's why there's such a emphasis on street sweeping, catch basin cleaning. You know, we put out educational blurbs on the website every summer about picking up your grass clippings, you know, disposing of yard waste at the town transportation.
Yep. Well, that's good to know. I didn't know that leaves and yard debris had anything to do with it. So that's, that's something I don't guess everyone realizes. They think it's the, the unnatural stuff that you're putting on your lawn, but it's also the natural stuff. Yeah.
You can look at our website and there's some educational information for folks who are interested.
All right. I will do that. I will do that.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I do see more activity, more street sweeping, more trucks coming by and, and, you know, cleaning out the, the storm drains. It's like, I can see that you guys are on the job, Jay.
Thank you. Yeah, we are. We used to only do a street sweep in the streets once a year. Now we do it twice a year. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tris.
All right. So I'm just going to work, work down the list. Here I have the Winchester Hospital Pilot Agreement.
Okay. So here is the May 14th letter signed by Richard Weiner, the president of Winchester Hospital. So you've all seen this before and specifically this chart for fiscal year 21, 22, and 23. 21, of course, is quickly coming to a close. So when the town does reach an agreement with the hospital, then the funding associated with this current fiscal year will actually sort of come with that agreement. So obviously we're hoping to get that done before the end of June. Based on a past meeting, one of the questions was primarily around the $44,000 associated with line four, which is in, as this letter is written, allocated for a, a passenger van for the senior center. So the board had asked me to look at some other alternatives, which I am. Okay. So this is the memo that I wrote last week. So this gives the parameters for the funding that the hospital would like associated with these, these funds, in particular, the community health needs assessment. So here's the link to all that information. It is 159 pages. So I sort of pulled out the, the summary piece, which has the priority areas. So the, the community health priority areas for the 2020 to 2022 Winchester Hospital are sort of broken up into these three sections. So mental health and substance use disorders. So obviously another part of the agreement is supporting the mental health clinician, substance use clinician in the police department. Chronic complex conditions and their risk factors. So that's why we have the Board of Health and some support for them in here. And then there's social, and that probably is written wrong there, but social determinants of health and access to care. So breaking that down a little bit further. There is this section that I also pulled out of the report. So it kind of goes into those three priority areas. And kind of talks about the goals, the barriers that they're trying to address. So you know, the van, for example, is, was sort of a literal interpretation of increased access to affordable and safe transportation options. You know, increased access to clinical services for homebound patients. So the van was specifically for that. So you've kind of heard about that. And I actually included, sorry about this. So I included the memo from the, the Council on Aging, which talks about what they're trying to do. It also talks about the, you know, the, the two options they have. Obviously if they purchase something, they'd rather the, than, you know, the newer model. And I think there was a question from Mr. Mucci about like, so the ongoing cost. So they're estimating the maintenance would be about 1,200 a year. And then this is the, this is the two options here. So the 37,000 and the 44,000 option. This is significantly smaller than the beautiful van that they have parked outside of the Jenks Center right now. This one is, is sort of much more mobile in terms of helping and practical in terms of bringing people to and from appointments. So I was also asked to look at a recreation option, and I know Nick is on the call, so he can better explain this specifically because I'm sure this is shown on the screen 90 degrees left. So Nick has a lot of exciting ideas in the Recreation Department that we think could also fit within the Community Health Assessment Guidelines. This idea in particular is one that has about $130,000 cost with a potential $30,000 grant. So I'm sorry, it's sideways, but the, so we're looking at potentially a net of $100,000. It's a, it's kind of a fitness center that would, that would support, you know, people of all ages. But I don't know, I don't know, Nick, do you want to help sell this better than I can? If you're still on.
Sure. Hi, hi Lisa. Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So yeah, so one of the options that we were looking at that kind of fit into a couple of the buckets that Lisa talked about earlier was an outdoor fit court to be placed at one of the local parks. We're benchmarking some other communities that already have these fit courts that are partnered with their local hospitals. One of the ones is in Burlington that was, was provided by a fu- funding from the Leahy Clinic. They, they are unbelievable resource, the community. They're basically an outdoor gym that allows a variety of fitness options for folks free of charge. They're constantly updating the, the workout set you can do. There's all different types of workouts for all different types of abilities. It comes with training where they train ambassadors to teach people how to do it. Additionally, there's a way of, of creating increased revenue as well by partnering with local professionals to run courses and, and provide fitness options there. But it is also open like anything else in a park that could be free of, free of charge to be, and, and people can self-guide themselves through the fitness options. There's a, there's an app that I've used plenty of times that you, you follow a different fitness path every time. So it, it's a really, it's a really cool innovative way to bring opportunities for people to get, get in shape, free, once it's built, it's, it's free for anyone in the community to use. It can bring a plethora of, of programming options for the Recreation Department as well. Also the COA, I don't know if anyone knows this, but because of COVID, the COA has gotten really creative in bringing a fitness class. They've been utilizing all the parks and, and the outdoor areas to bring fitness to the, the, the people that belong to the COA. So it'll bring in a plethora of recreational opportunities. It'll combat, you know, when you're, when you're working out, combat depression, isolation. There's a lot of benefits to these outdoor fit courts. So that's kind of the basic overview of it. As Lisa mentioned, we are, we were picked as a, a prime place to put one of these. So the chance of getting the $30,000 grant is pretty high. That would, that would knock the price down a little bit. So, so we're looking in the, trying to get some funding in, in for something like this that I think will help with some of the initiatives of the pilot program.
Great. I see Stacy has her, Stacy Ward, our controller, has her hand raised, I guess, on this, this matter. So go ahead, Stacy.
Yeah, I just want to, thanks for letting me talk. I just want to talk about FY21. If this is going to be part of the pilot for FY21, we have no appropriation to buy a van or to purchase recreation equipment. So if this is going to be something we want to do, it'd have to be pushed out to 22 or 23 or be packaged as part of the gift. So just want everyone to know that if we're, if we receive the $44,000, whether it be for the Council on Aging Van or anything other than anything special and specific in FY21, our hands are tied at this point. So it would have to be packaged as, as part of the gift. And then the select board can vote it at their meeting. And so I just want to be cautious about that. And in the $44,000, if we do go forward with that for the Council on Aging, the check should be made to the WSA, not the town, because like I said, we wouldn't be able to buy the van because we have no appropriation. So just want to make sure we're all very clear on that.
And Stacy, that would be, that would be in the agreement as sort of that asterisk underneath that it would go to the Winchester Senior Association.
Okay, I didn't see that.
For, if it went to the Recreation Department, there's still a 501(c)(3) that we could likely have a go-to. Or the other alternative is that it would, again, it would be added to the select board gift fund. So that would be a bigger one in the select board would make that vote.
The Recreation 501(c)(3), is that the Friends of the Recreation? Who's that?
Stacy, there's a Friends of Recreation 501(c) that's still, still active.
If they got the money, they would have to control the spending and they would purchase it and then donate it to the town. Is that how we would run it and operate it?
I think the easier way would be to direct it through the gift fund. Cause then that would give the select board control. And also, you know, since, since there's not enough money, you know, this, this project can't happen right away.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it also, if this like where doesn't want to make a decision on which one is of the projects to fund now, we could also just ask the hospital to make it all in the gift fund and then give the select board more time to decide where it's going to go.
And one other question, Rich had asked a question about the maintenance. Is that the town going to pay the maintenance on the van or is that WSA going to pay the maintenance? Is that in the Council on Aging budget at all? Do you know?
No, it's not yet. It would be absorbed in the Council on Aging budget that they have for their vehicle maintenance.
So Lisa, I guess that was my question. So I mean, they talk about $1,200 for maintenance, but you know, the insurance, you know, that's not in the budget yet. And then also, I know they have two part-time drivers and a transportation coordinator, it looks like. So would that increase? You know, now that you have two vehicles on the road, would that increase the amount of, of costs, you know, for staffing? And if that's something they've considered and if they have the funds to do that.
Yeah. So my understanding from the Director of the Council on Aging is that they would absorb it in their Transportation Director and, and part-time van driver. So the additional costs, the 1,200, which I, I, I don't have an exact breakdown of. We originally asked to have that included in the pilot agreement. That was, that was stricken. So that's something that they'll still have to, have to figure out. But certainly there's, you know, there's a huge benefit to providing this, this service. So I'm sure we'll, we'll be able to work out those costs.
Will the WSA buy it and then donate it to the town and we insure it? How's that going to work? Cause who's going to own this vehicle once they purchase it?
It'll most likely be the town that will purchase it. So there'll be some agreement between the Winchester Senior Association and the Council on Aging.
And then just Nick on the, on the just sports court. So it looks like the, the grants for $100,000. I'm sorry, you got to come up with $100,000 and then the, the grant for 30,000. But there's also an additional, you got to pay for installation, which they estimated at $45,000. So theoretically, we'd need to come up with $145,000 by reading of this to, to, to do this, right?
Yeah, Rich, that, that's correct. There is additional. So you can handle the install either in-house, you can contract out. I'm assuming we'd probably look at a contract out situation. There would be a need for additional funding, as you mentioned. The, the site setup can be something that can be handled in-house too. And that's something that, you know, Jay and I would have to talk about at some point and see if that's something. The 32 by 32 foot pad that needs to be done to set it up prior to the install. So that would be something that we'd have to look into. So that could be a cost savings as well. So.
I, I mean, I just don't see that much, if we're talking about, you know, the pilot program, I just don't see where we'd come up with the other funds for this project initially. I mean, I don't know if ARPA money can be used for it, or if it's part of a, a bigger renovation of, you know, I think you mentioned Leonard, you know, the playground there I know is in need of, of repair and so I, I don't know what the plan would be. I thought, I mean, it's a good idea. I mean, I say, I know this one in Burlington. I see it. I mean, I drive past it. So I know what you're talking about. You know, if we're talking about the pilot program, I just don't know how we incorporate this large expense unless the hospital wants to generously donate more money.
Well, we could certainly make that ask. And like I said, part of it is getting this done so that we can get the fiscal And like I said, part of it is getting this done so that we can get the fiscal year 21 payment. And part of it is making sure that there's adequate time for the select board. So, you know, putting it in the in the select board gift fund could certainly do that. We could also present options for other uses. For example, the town is supposed to be receiving a one time. Not entitlement community, community developmental block grant. So CDBG funds of $215,217 that can be spent on things like park improvements. So that, you know, that would certainly cover this cost and potentially some other items. Again, that's another conversation about, you know, how we want to prioritize those funds. But again, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I think that putting it into the into the select board gift fund makes sense. And then we can figure out how to I I want to spend it on recreation. I'm just not sure that, you know, $100,000 on this project is the right thing to spend it. I mean, I know the tennis courts have. You know, cracks on on the floor, on the ground and nets with. More holes than they're supposed to already have. And there's playgrounds at Leonard and other fields that need. That could use some TLC. So I'm totally in favor of 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 putting this money into recreation. But I think we have existing facilities that could probably use quite a bit of the money than the than the 100,000. So I think we can do that by putting it into the gift fund.
Yeah, that sounds like the way to go to me, too. Amy or Mike, any questions, thoughts?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I think. You know, I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I think that there's, I mean, as Nick had asked, there's a lot of. You, like Mariano said, current needs and and things that we can do to really beef up. What we're doing around recreation and bringing in more money for recreation with additional facilities. So I'm just glad we're having this conversation. And I think that there it sounds like there's some a couple of different ways that we can start thinking about how we're going to fund some of these projects. So but I think that that makes sense for the near term to put it in the gift fund. So we have a little bit more time to discuss and. Figure out what we want to do with that initial 44,000.
Yeah, so it sounds good to me. I appreciate Nick bringing this forward, too. It's, you know, we always have our attention on a lot of other things. And so and there are a lot of needs on the the fields and with the courts and everywhere. We just probably need to take a look at a priority list for all that stuff and start chipping away at it. And because there are more programs and there's definitely a higher demand. I think people have gotten used to being outside a lot more and a lot of our facilities are being heavily used, which is great. But we just need to make sure that they're they're, you know, meeting the current need. So so it's good to see you, Nick. Glad you're bringing this forward. Thank you. And it seems like it makes fun. It makes sense to put the in the gift fund. So.
So Lisa, are you are you looking to us to approve this pilot tonight? It certainly would be easier for the select board to make a motion to approve. The Winchester Hospital voluntary payments fiscal year 21 to 23, as outlined in this letter. With the amendment of placing the $44,000. In line four and adding it to the gift fund for the a total of the gift fund being $94,000.
Lisa, I know we talked last meeting, they were going to adjust some of the footnotes concerning the tax payments. Do you know if that's been done that in a future draft?
Yeah. So I mean, they they basically indicated to me that they. That they, you know, essentially like round numbers. What I had heard from our town council is that. The way this is written, it. It doesn't change. It doesn't change their tax obligation to us if this number or this thing is 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 different. But. If it does make the select word more comfortable, we can change. We can change that that bullet point to say that this is a this is a cost estimate of of the taxes owed to the town.
So I would like to remove interest and penalties. If they don't pay their property taxes on time, then they should pay more than the 184,000. They should pay the interest and penalties. That's that's my only comment.
And you said that last time, too. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I do want to kind of emphasize, because if the taxes and penalties. Would actually make their payment more than this amount. So let's say they owe 41,000 and it's essentially a rounding up. If they have penalties and interest, it's actually likely to be more than 41,000. So it's not necessarily less than because then it implies that that's a cap. That's why I was thinking more of seeing that. Even just getting rid of anything that says property taxes until interest penalties, etc. And basically just say that this line item is meant to represent the estimated annual tax bill that they receive every year. And just sort of leave it at that. Rather than any formula.
Okay, I I see what the intention is. And yeah, I agree. If we if we reworded that way, that would make sense. Yeah.
I guess, I mean, this is a pilot. Letter, you know, payment move taxes. So why are we even including? The tax payments in this calculation? Man, I just, I mean, that's their obligation. I mean, I get it. It's just I don't understand why it's in a pilot agreement.
So I know in past pilot agreements, there's been a reference to this number and the way that. We've calculated and I think Stacy had that really nice spreadsheet that she gave you did show the total payments, including their tax payment. For 620 Washington Street. From their perspective. By adding it into this agreement, this this, you know, gives them credit for that number in a way that it wouldn't if it wasn't included here.
Okay.
Yeah, and this this is was something that Lisa had been going back and forth with them about, and it seems very important to them. So can we approve this as you stated, Lisa? With the understanding that we would change the wording of this footnote? So that it would say, in essence, that this represents an estimate of the. Property taxes for the year. So I would maybe the simple way would be to authorize the town manager to execute a voluntary tax payment. As outlined in the letter from Winchester Hospital dated May 14, 2021. With two amendments, the first amendment would be to. Increase the select board gift fund in fiscal year 21 to 94,000 and decreasing the line item for Winchester Senior Association to zero. And all language associated thereof and changing the. Second. Footnote to delete that sentence and change it to. This is meant to represent in a separate annual tax payment that is issued by the town. Separately.
By the hospital separately?
Yeah, for the property at 20 Washington Street. To the hospital separately. Yeah, okay.
What do you need me to do here?
Just say so moved or something, I guess. It's getting late. Thank you. Thank you both. So we need to do a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you for that. I put the committee and liaison assignments on the agenda mainly because the cable advisory committee is in need of a a new member. Since Jackie has. Stepped off the committee, off the board, I mean. And I'm looking for my list. But there are a lot of things that need to be updated because there are things that Jackie was doing. Or there are things that just need to be changed. And I hope we can get through this pretty quickly. Thank you for putting that up there. So just starting from the top. I don't think we need to change the audit advisory committee. I'm happy to stay there. Capital planning committee here is in the.
Can I interrupt for a second? Sorry. The audit advisory committee has two members of the select board, they're not primary and backup. So there's two sitting members. So I don't know if you want to have two primary members and then one backup.
Didn't realize that. Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. So the audit advisory committee is very, doesn't do a lot. It's just kind of monitoring the audit meets twice a year, basically for a few sessions. I've been going. Mariano, maybe you could find some time to to actually go instead of being the backup.
I thought I was a backup. So if we're both primary, then I'll go. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good. And then capital planning up here really is more. There are three people who are appointed to capital planning by the select board. I think those people are Helen Chilu. Roger McPeak and can't think of the third person that I wrote down on my other piece of paper.
Jim Johnson.
Jim Jim Johnson. Thank you. So those are the the appointees. This position is more of a liaison position. Listening, being the information conduit. And I know, Mike, you expressed interest in continuing in this. In this role, but it occurs to me that you you've been doing it for a while. And it might be something that would be a good platform for learning, you know, the ropes for for somebody newer. Just learning the whole capital process, especially right now, because we're kind of at the beginning of that. Where capital planning gets all the requests and prioritizes them. And I would kind of ask you, you know, you you wouldn't mind opening it up to somebody just to get that experience. I don't know who that would be, maybe Amy, maybe Rich, maybe Mariano wants to do it. Just wanted to have a quick conversation about that.
I mean, I'll I'll pass. I think that if, you know, I think it makes sense that it's somebody to gain experience. And so from that standpoint, it would make sense for Amy or Rich, I think, to be on it.
Rich, I'll give you first right of refusal. And I'm happy to be your backup. But.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do whatever you guys want me to do. You know, I just, I know Mike's. Put a lot of time in there and I don't know if there's further projects that they're working on that, you know, he feels he needs to continue on or what? I don't know.
I don't know. I just. It just seems like I don't know how many years you've been doing it. I just think maybe some rotation is a good thing.
Yeah, I think I've only been doing it for for a couple of years and definitely gotten the. You know, it's something I enjoy doing. I think there's a, you know, backup position there as well that someone, I mean, you know, could. Jump in. It it's a lot of meetings is the only thing. So I mean, if it was, you know, a couple of us that were kind of tagging in and out, I think that that would be. You know, that would be helpful, too. So and because the the process, I mean, it, once it starts, I mean, it's pretty heavy right into it. So but yeah, I mean, I I've been working on the trash project for a long time. And it's one of those projects that engineering keeps getting pushed off. And so, you know, I'd like to see that one through. But yeah, I'd like to stay on the committee if possible. And certainly having someone else, you know, equally share. The role or anything. I mean, we kind of define our our committee assignments. So it that that could certainly be it and happy to work with someone and stays out of it over a period of time.
Thank you.
Now, one thing is, could we move this from committee membership to organizational liaisons to the next? Because it's not a voting, it's not a, it's just, it's just for somebody to see what the committee is working on and report back to the select board, right? It's not to actually, like, we actually have three appointees to the committee. So this is just to report back to this board what capital is working on, not the other way around, correct?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point, too, because I was going to say that I think that what we're going to try to do, Susan and I have been talking about this. Is make sure that we we carve out time in our meetings for those report outs. So that they're part of our every meeting, we have an agenda item that talks about our report outs. So that that flow of information is happening more regularly. So I totally agree, I think. And I just wanted to, you know, talk to the board about that. Because I think that's an important piece and something that has been missing.
So we'll we'll ask Patty.
I'm happy to back up Mike if that's if somebody needs to back up Mike. Or if Rich, if you want to do it as well. There's no limit, right?
There's no limit.
Yeah, I I think, too, I mean, what's been helpful, I I'm usually asked to attend the meetings. Because it's not everyone is it's appropriate, I think, for someone to be there. But if there's a specific, you know, question about what the select board is doing, like our, you know, would this like we want to do an override or something like that? So it's it's a little bit of a give and take. It's not just attending the meeting and then reporting back to the select board. It's certainly a part of the role. It's, you know, it's an engagement and a conversation of priorities, which, you know, comes comes that way. I mean, even though we do have the appointees. So over the years, Jim Johnson has been the appointee and been kind of on the select board for a long period of time. So there was that kind of natural flow. But but anyway, it's happy to work with Amy on it and, you know, continue.
Okay, great. Thank you. I see Lisa's fixing this in real time. Except I can't read it now. I'm sorry. But I switched to Patty because she have the Excel. Patty, do you mind zooming in? Okay, let me just. I apologize. I should find my copy. Great. So.
Maybe like 200.
Oh, come on. There we go. I think. All right.
If you can move.
There we go.
Yeah, all right. So committee on names doesn't seem to meet very much, but maybe we should have somebody on there. I'm happy to do it. Then fields management, Amy has been, you know, has expressed a lot of interest in this and I think wants to stay on there. Housing partnership board.
For the fields management, if I could be backup for that one?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
And then Housing Partnership Board, Mike, has been on there a while. I know it's it's something he's really passionate about. So I, you know. Mike, if you want to keep that, I think that makes sense.
Thank you. Yeah.
A backup person would be kind of nice to have, too, because it. You know, it it's involving, it involves affordable housing and we're working on that pretty diligently. So if somebody else wants to be a backup and learn more about affordable housing, that'd be great. Maybe I could turn to Rich to do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Open space and recreation plan. Again, that's sort of ties into the field management and Amy wanted to continue in that role.
That is not something that I've done much with or heard much about. So.
Yeah, neither have I.
Figure out what that is, to be honest with you. So maybe highlight that one, Lisa, or Patty.
Just like question mark. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do it if it's something, but.
And I sort of feel the same way about the Abra Jonah initiative. I think it was, it seems to be largely done or has turned into more smaller projects along, you know, sort of landscaping along the river. Cable advisory, that's the one we need to have somebody step onto because they're still negotiating and working on their contracts. Who would like to do that?
So I was on it before Jackie and I'm happy to do it again. But I think it it adds value if there's an attorney. So I was on it before Jackie and I'm happy to do it again, but I think it adds value if there's an attorney from this board, given that we have attorneys on the board. But I'm happy to do it if nobody else does.
I can do it.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it's contract negotiations, so that makes some sense. We just did Capital Planning up above. Chamber of Commerce Liaison. Mike and Amy have been doing this.
I'll step back on that one. I mean, it seems like it would make sense for Rich and Amy or anybody, you know, other than me at this point. I think I've been doing it for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, Rich, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I'd like to take that on.
Yeah, put me as backup. Thank you.
Great. Disability Access Commission. That one meets and does a lot of stuff, right?
Conservation Commission.
Oh, did I skip something? Alright. Conservation Commission. We could leave it this way, or Mariano, if you would rather be backup and I took on the
Yeah, that's fine.
Most of it, yeah, okay. So now we are on Council on Aging. And it looks like Mike is on there?
Happy to stay with it unless, you know, somebody else is.
Okay. Energy Management, which is really climate action? No.
It's both.
Disability Access Commission again.
Oh yeah, we have to do disability.
Okay. Amy, you're up there now.
Done very much with that, so I'm happy to step back if someone else is interested.
I guess I could put myself there.
How many, I mean, do we, I don't, I guess, some of these things, I don't, how often do they meet? Is that, I think that that would be kind of helpful to understand too. Like I know, obviously, there's certain ones that meet more regularly. Do you have a sense of that? Has anyone else done it?
I really don't.
I think they meet pretty regularly and I think, you know, in context of, you know, some of the work that we've been doing, evaluating our buildings and with new construction of Lynch. It seems like they're kind of engaged. What the Select Board role is as a liaison there, I don't, I wouldn't be able to say. If, that might be minimal, frankly, I don't know.
So Amy, have they ever contacted you about attending meetings?
No.
So do you want me to reach out to Michelle and see what they need?
Yeah, I mean, I think let's get this sorted out and then we can, yeah, Susan, I'd be happy to back you up on that one.
Okay.
Be cognizant of my.
Yep, I can be, can meet on that.
Yeah, Patty, that'd be helpful, I think, just to understand what, how we can be most helpful and certainly understand what they're doing and we can report back.
Yeah, because there's a lot more that they're doing and they, they do meet during the day.
Okay, okay.
So I'd like to stay on that one, Energy Management and Climate Action.
I'm happy not to be the backup if somebody else wants to be the backup, if somebody's interested in that. But if not, I'm happy to stay. Moving on then to the Permanent Street Tree Committee. Definitely, we need to find somebody. I don't.
I don't think it meets very often.
Regularly, I think if there's a tree issue, they meet.
I mean, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Planning Board Liaison, that would be pretty active, I would think.
I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay. And Amy, if you.
I can back you up, yeah, I wasn't gonna do it.
Okay.
I'll back you up.
Let's see. Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee or TTA.
I can come off that if there's somebody else that wants to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've been meeting with, I've had a few meetings with them, so I wouldn't mind being on it. Whether either primary or secondary, if somebody wants to be primary, that's fine, but.
I could be backup for that if you want.
Okay.
Yep. So Wildwood Cemetery Advisory Committee, I confess I've never been to a single meeting.
I've been to a few of those. I mean, it's, you know.
They seem to know what they're doing without a lot of, but having, having an information flow would be better.
It comes up more in the context of the capital process, I think, as well. So, but, you know, some of the things have come up, like when they've wanted to hang, you know, wreaths and things and different, you know, religious symbols and things, you know. So I've been there in that context as well as the capital stuff, so over the years, but.
Well, if somebody else wants to learn about that and work on that, that'd be great, but I'm also happy to stay. This Winchester Hospital Leahy was the pilot negotiation. I don't know how much ongoing conversation there is. But it's sort of working with the town manager on those things and then reporting in, you know.
Susan, if you're looking to come off that, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. That makes sense. And then.
For the working groups, I'm wondering if maybe we need to get an updated list.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the Field Master Plan is done, so it's not really a working group anymore, so yeah.
So maybe we could to be, continue this.
Yeah.
If we get a better working group list.
Is there a liaison to the Master Plan Steering Committee or anything like that?
That'd be a good one to add.
That would be something to actually kind of explore with the Planning Board. What do they
Okay.
Need us to do, or, you know, how can we work with the Planning Board better or more effectively?
Sure.
Yeah, I think from here on out, we're gonna have to have, you know, we're, we're gonna have a meeting on our goals. Amy, Lisa and I are working on identifying a facilitator to do that. And I think some of that discussion will help us, you know, once we understand what the working groups are. And, you know, if we're gonna have a State of the Town Committee and look at an override or sort of understand the trajectory toward an operating override, you know, that's something we would better understand after we've done our goal setting, seems to me. So maybe we can sort of do this, leave this to be continued after that. Does that make sense? I see some nodding.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we want to, we want to update you on that, so we want to, because we want to plan that very soon, so, okay.
Patty, will you just circulate this list just so?
Yes.
Do you want me just remove Stacy, Jackie's names off of it?
That would make sense, yeah. Stacy, you still have your hand up. Did you have something you needed to tell us?
Yes, I don't want you to forget about our wonderful retiree health insurance committee that the Select has a voting member.
Of course.
We haven't met in a while because of COVID, but it is a town meeting committee that they're trying to make it a formal, like, regular committee. And I think, Susan, you were on it the last time, but I know that Mariano's had a stint, Mike probably had a stint on there. So I will probably be meeting again sometime soon, but I just wanted to make sure that got added in there.
Thank you, yeah.
Give you more work.
It doesn't meet that often, but it is an important committee. Especially when we're talking about things like
OPEB.
OPEB, yes. So if somebody else wants to be on it and learn about OPEB and that stuff, that'd be great. Or I could stay on it.
I can do it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So that was pretty quick. Thank you, guys. I think that was much needed. And, and yes, Patty, please do distribute that so we know what we're supposed to be doing. So that brings me to the Ephemera Contract Extension. This is the, this is Jason Lee and his, his company that works, is working on our anti-racism initiative or our diversity, equity and inclusion work. This way, you know, we started back after the George Floyd murder and this upswelling of awareness and need to really have some good conversations, really understand this as a town, and we're trying to figure out where to start and how to do it. It got interrupted. The plan, the initial plan was to do a, some kind of survey. And then, you know, based on the information that we uncovered from that to then branch out and do other things. I don't know if, having gotten to this point, I don't know if we want to just extend it so we can figure out what the next step is or whether this is really working for us. That's, that's the question in my mind. So, you know, this was something, you know, Mike and I started back when. So I wanted to open it up for other people's thoughts, whether to extend it or whether maybe we need to go in a different direction.
Yeah, I think, I believe that I think we should pause and go in a different direction. I think that we, I think as a board, we need to really understand what our objectives are and create kind of that plan, like you were saying, Susan, like, so what are our priority areas? Where do we start with our strategy, one year, three years, whatever? It's an incredibly important project. I think have, working with someone who has a little bit more experience around in the municipal world, you know, in city and town government, I think makes a lot of sense. So that we can, we can look at this through that lens, which I think we really need, because there's a lot of, you know, I do this work all the time in corporations and it's very different in a city and town government. So that would, I think it would be really, I think it would be appropriate at this point to pause and consider, you know, kind of not, I don't want to say starting from scratch, because we've got, we've gained a lot of insight. But looking to go in a different direction and really understand, be really crystal clear about our objectives and what we want to get out of this project.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know you had sort of expressed that to me and I wanted to talk about it. We do have an existing contract with, with Ephemera, but go ahead, Mariano.
So my view is the contract expired May 31st, right? And we're being asked to extend it to December 31st at no cost to the town. We already put $12,000 into this contract. There's a lot of information that was gathered. I'd like to see us extend it to December 31st so that if MRA can finish the job that we asked them to do, we're not adding scope, we're not adding money into it. So let's, let's have them finish the work that we asked them to do, get a report from them. And then we can look at that report and think how we want to move forward from that. But I think extending it at no cost makes sense.
That is true. We're not adding costs. They graciously said, let's just extend it while you, you know, figure out how to continue. And they, they have drafted up a survey.
I just, I, truthfully, I have concerns about the survey and I think that there's no cost financially, but I just think we should, there could be other costs.
I think it's fair for us to kind of reassess where we are. I mean, when we started this, you know, it was in a completely different context and environment. And this was always kind of the very first piece of it that we were starting out with, like, the survey stuff. And I think what we've gained is valuable, but, you know, I think we never really talked about what the next phases of this would look like. So I think we're really looking at, hopefully that maybe some of the data would, would drive those decisions. So, yeah, I'm open, open to anything, but, you know, it's certainly Ephemera's done some good, good work for us, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like to finish the scope of what we had originally done, which included the survey and included the final report and recommendations for next steps. And if we can do that at no additional cost to the town, I think we should, we should do that.
I tend to agree with Amy on this. You know, I understand there's no financial costs, but, you know, I think, you know, certainly I think it's time to reevaluate this and see what other options are out there and.
I mean, I haven't seen the survey, so I don't know what the concerns are. Like, it hasn't been, we haven't been, we haven't publicly. I mean, if we're gonna say that we don't want to finish something for free, I think we need to say why, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'll just speak for my perception of it, what I've seen of the survey is that I don't think it's, to put it out to town staff, I don't think it's, the, the, the risk reward isn't there for me in terms of what we're gonna get out of it. I mean, that's just, and I said that to Jason Lee as well. I mean, I expressed that concern. And I didn't think that we're gonna get what we're, the right data, what we're trying to get to move forward. So that's just, that's my personal opinion. I just think, based on what I've seen, I don't think it's, it's the right move to move forward with it.
Can we see the survey? Is that public? I mean.
We, we could probably do that, yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the scope, right, to see the survey, so.
Just to piggyback on what Amy's talking about, you know, the contract, you know, and I do agree, Jason's, you know, firm does some great work. You know, states that the buy-in from staff and department heads within the town government is critical to their success and subsequent work and advancing principles of anti-racism. I just think how this project has evolved over time, I just don't know if the buy-in's there yet to take the next step. So I think we need to, to go back and reassess the situation.
Yeah, one of the things we needed to do is to make it very clear that this was initiated by all of us and that you know, we weren't trying to connect anything with any one person. We're trying to find a sort of a a climate or what, what the overall awareness and what the questions are is among the staff and ourselves. And we have not done that very effectively. And I'm also torn because this was a new time, a new, you know, a new kind of a new project for Ephemera to work with a municipality with a, you know, a set of elected and appointed, you know, government organization, which is, you know, different from other types of organizations. And seems like a consultant with more experience with that type of organization would help us more, would kind of help us understand how to negotiate this whole topic. So I'm very torn.
And I think in the last year, there's been a lot of changes for municipalities engaging with this. And, you know, a lot of people, you know, there are a lot of successes and a lot of failures. And so I think it's fair for us to look at, you know, what the path forward looks like and what we can learn from other communities as well.
Yeah. So Lisa, you were, could you just kind of advise us about how much we've, we've spent and how much, you know, is left to do?
So Stacy had put what's been spent.
So, uh, so Stacy had put what's been spent in the chat. This probably doesn't incorporate any work that they've done since their recent bill. So I don't know exactly what was at the contract. Number one, I haven't read it, uh, you know, tonight to tell you exactly what would happen if we stopped the contract and if we owe them the full amount. Or just the portion which they've done, but it looks like out of the original contract amount, um, plus the amendment, there is still roughly $4,000 of the 12-ish thousand dollars that, um, has yet to be billed or completed. So right now, I mean, there, there's no, there's no work product that's been completed yet. The final report was supposed to be at the end. I don't know if the board wants to walk away from having any feedback whatsoever, or if there wants to be some sort of, you know, negotiated status report. Whether, you know, at this point in time, there's any, uh, you know, ownership of, of the survey, which did have a lot, a lot of our input into, so. You know, there's, there's certainly a lot to discuss. I wasn't aware that this was the
I'm sorry, I didn't either.
So I wasn't prepared to go in this direction.
Yeah. So Mariano, maybe the thing to do is to talk to, um, to talk to Jason. And see if there's a direction, you know, if this.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the board just wants to move straight to the final report with whatever we have now, then I guess that's what we'll move to. The, the contract says after the final report, he'll invoice the final $3,985. So, I don't, I don't think that we save any money by not extending it. Because we'll get the report and the, and the invoice, but. Yeah, I mean, when we can talk to Jason and just get the report of whatever he's been able to do if we're not willing to, to extend the work.
I mean, and maybe, you know, just say we can have the survey if we want to use it or not, you know, that the decision is up, sort of up to us.
I think, can we share the survey around? I don't know if you have it. I don't have it.
No, I know, I know. And that, that was one of the things we were going to do and we just never.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That big step, yeah.
I mean, maybe we can extend it to August 31st. That way we can get these things done, right? Get the survey, get the final report.
Yeah.
Maybe we can do that.
Yeah. Have him come talk to us, you know, report back to the full board. Yeah.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm not sure. Given their, their involvement to date and, you know, how this didn't really materialize as intended, I just don't, I, I just caution us on getting a final report on their work. Because I just don't think this, this materialized as it was intended by, you know, the scope of the contract or, or this board's intentions. I, I just, I just want to put caution towards that. I mean, I.
Okay. Yeah, good point.
We can get a partial report. Whatever work has been done, right? I mean, I think we should get something out of it, right? Work has been done. We should get a report and a survey. We shouldn't just bury it like it never happened.
Yeah. I, I think we kind of owe that to, to, to Ephemera too. Because they did put a lot of time, you know, a lot of time and thought and not with all of us, but you know, with some of us. And I think their experience is, is useful. I think we could, you know, both, both of us can learn from, on trying to understand how this played out. So we do need to extend it to something. So how about the end of August? So that gives us a deadline as well. How does that sound?
I'm kind of torn. I mean, I think, I, I don't know.
I mean, to sort of just break it off is a little, sends a message too. And, and not, not to blame anyone or to say that, you know, it's a total failure. It's just, as I understand, you know, we just need to go in a different direction with a different consultant who's, you know, more familiar with government organizations.
It seems, it seems really disres, yeah, it seems really disrespectful to not even give him a chance to come to the board and present
Yeah.
whatever he's been able to find so far. That's the only reason I'm saying August 31st. It's just so that we have one meeting that he can show up to and give us the partial report of what he's worked on.
And I think we could all learn from that. Just, you know, look, look at what the, the survey was going to talk about and whether, whether the survey is a good idea and, and if, if so, what would be, you know, what was valuable and what was done or what, you know, would be, would change.
Is it, is it my understanding that, correct me if I'm wrong, because you, you all may know better than I do, but he, they met with one group of employees and had like a a, a safe discussion about, you know, racism, discrimination. You know, I'd have to go back and look at his contract. It's getting late.
Yeah.
You know, but they had one, they had one of these, I would say, you know, for lack of a better term, focus groups, right? And then, and that was it, right? I mean, and then they were working on a survey.
Correct.
And I, I think there was, you know, seven or eight people in that group.
I think it was Lisa's, Lisa's sending me information. It was two focus groups. And then there were a series of, of leadership meetings, meetings with sort of directors and Lisa.
Okay.
And with, um, Mike and, and me. And the survey was supposed to just kind of get a, a, a baseline understanding of where the, the staffs, just sort of what their level of awareness was and what words, you know, they use and what words are, are scary or uncomfortable for them, you know, because this is, can be a sensitive topic. The hour is late. I know this is a tough conversation to have. It just, as Mariano said, it just seems kind of disrespectful not to even finish and, and, you know, understand the, the value of what we did together. So I would like to extend it and do that. Draw whatever conclusions we can be drawn from the experience on both sides and, and then decide what we want to do next and what kind of, what kind of direction we want to go on this topic. And what's good for the, what's good for the organization, what's good for our town? Because I think we do need to go some, in, in a, in a direction on this topic.
Oh, absolutely. There's no question about that.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that at all.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, maybe the, maybe what we can do is just, um, have a conversation with F M R A about what they think they can do with what they have so far. If there's a, if there's a a road to a, some sort of report based on what they've done so far and get their perspective on it. I mean, I think that's a worthwhile conversation to have.
Okay. Well put. Thank you.
So Susan, do you and Amy want to have that conversation and then bring it back? I mean?
Okay.
If that, I don't know.
Yeah. All right. So I'll, I'll try to set that up very soon. Let's see, what's next?
Are we extending it at least until the end of July? So you
Yeah.
So that they're under contract while you have the conversation with them?
Okay, you're right. You're right.
Can we go to the end of August so that FMRA can come to a meeting and present? I mean, we're not trying to bury everything here, right?
Oh.
We want things in the open, so let's just extend it to August 31st and let's have FMRA come present at a meeting. I mean, this is painful right now.
Yeah.
It's embarrassing.
Well, I can't make them.
It's not embarrassing. It's actually, we're having a thoughtful conversation.
It's embarrassing to me.
A big deal. Okay. I think that we, I think that's, we, we want to extend it to August 31st. I think that that's fine. And we can, Susan, you and I can have a conversation with Jason and have him come and I think get the survey sent out so everyone understands what that looks like. I think it's very obtuse right now, so.
Yeah, why should it be so mysterious? It doesn't have to be.
Right. Right.
Okay, so I'll take that as a motion to extend Ephemera's contract until, um, August 31st.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Uh, I'm going to abstain from this.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Yeah, that's fine. You, you, it's, you're new. That's fine. Okay. Does that make sense, Lisa? So now we have the, we need to move forward with the town manager's evaluation. We need to move forward with what we've been calling a 360 review or a, a survey to directors and staff, I think, a list of about 20 people. And Amy was working with Bob Joy to devise that. And we want to just, when we finalize that survey and send it out, we want to include the existing goals, the town manager's existing goals. So that's why this agenda item is confirm FY21 town managers' goals, 360 review and evaluation process. So that's the, the package deal. So Amy, wanted to just kind of cover what you and Bob Joy have been working on.
Yes, so, um, so we've been working on a, a sort of a survey type review about, basically there's a few, a few different categories. I'll just read them out. So relations with the select board, organizational relations and skills, financial management, community relations, town administration and general expectations. And there's quantitative and qualitative responses. So we've got like a one through five rating system for each question. And then there's an opportunity for the raiders to write in comments and context and examples and things like that. So the raider, so Lisa, um, we had sent, I sent over an initial list and Lisa added to it, which was awesome. And so we have a pretty extensive list of readers. I don't know the number exactly, but it includes department heads and selected town staff, boards and committees, so chairs of different boards and committees in town. Some of her peers, like the superintendent of schools, for instance. And then certainly the select board as well. So, we would like to, you know, send that out ASAP because we should have done it a long time ago and Lisa deserves this feedback. So, um, that's the plan. The, yeah, so we are, the plan is to include this. So Susan is going to, or I don't know if Bob Joyce, I don't know how the, how we're doing it logistically, but there's going to be an introductory email that all of the raiders will receive with the link to the survey. And we're going to attach Lisa's goals from last year so that they're a part of the review process so that all the raiders can see the goals as well. I think that's it. I don't know, Susan or Lisa, if you had anything to add, but.
The only thing I would add is that, that the idea here is these are in the packet so that we can just vote to confirm that yes, these are the goals that should be included with this survey. And I think all of us, with the exception of Rich, have, have seen this before and maybe these cropped up in a packet earlier. And Rich has seen them. And they're, they're not mysterious, you know, they're some of the things we've been working on.
So I guess my, my only question is, were these goals set sometime before the fiscal year or are we setting these kind of retroactively?
I don't think we voted on them. I don't think we really set goals. We had two meetings in August and we talked about setting goals and we just sort of didn't know how to, how to actually do it. Partly because we're on Zoom and I think in prior years, the, um, the board would sort of get together and do that exercise where you have, you know, paper up on the wall and you put sticky notes to vote for the things that you think are a high priority. And then, um, you could figure out who, you know, what was the board's five priorities collectively and who would be more, most interested in working on which one to sort of allocate things. But we, we just didn't know how to, you know, functionally, how to do that over Zoom or, and, you know, so institutionally, whatever practice had been followed had just kind of died. So we did not, the board did not, we failed. We did not set goals. Which meant that we didn't really set future goals for the town manager either. So that's something we need to do going forwards. But for the purposes of the eval, you know, what Mariano worked on with, with Lisa was, were the goals, were her goals for the, the, right, you know, for this year, that's finishing up. So in a way, we're voting on them retroactively, I guess. Yes.
I guess from my perspective, I'm new, so I don't know what, I wasn't here, so I don't know what you guys, I've been working, you know, I mean, I kind of do, but I, I don't know what conversations you've had. So I mean, I, I don't think I'm.
You don't have to vote on it. You can abstain to be, yeah.
Yeah, I'd probably abstain from this too.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I think we did, we did have a couple, you know, meetings and we did set our goals and we did talk about the things that we wanted to, you know, move forward on. We were also in the middle of, you know, responding to a pandemic. So maybe it happened as, um, you know, as fluidly as they had in the past and, uh, but we absolutely did have the conversations about our, the board's priorities and, you know, what we wanted to get done and what was ahead of us as well, um, that, you know, we needed to tackle. Because, um, you know, we couldn't afford just to take a year off and we've got overrides coming and priority projects. But I don't think that that ever got translated into specific goals, you know, outside of what had been existing there in the past or generally for Lisa. So I don't, I don't, I think we'd started that process back in, um, late March, early April of the prior year. And just, things have just been kind of hanging in a loop, you know, for a long time.
And a lot of things have been worked on and accomplished or nearly accomplished, like negotiating with the MBTA, so.
And those have just been ongoing for, you know, however many, I mean, so some of the goals are in the goals for a couple of years, for, you know, three years, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's also part of the issue, right? That things come up throughout the year that we can't plan a year ahead, right? I mean, that's, that's the role of, of an executive is you, you don't have tasks lined up for the whole year, right? An executive has to be able to react to things that happen. So we also have to, you know, use that as a yardstick for, for performance measurement.
So I'm just looking for a motion to confirm the goals that were in the packet, that were on the screen, that really are carryover goals. That those are the ones.
And, and issue, and issue the, the 360 and then, are we, okay, so moved, you know?
How does, how does the 360 align with the town manager's contract, which spells out how the reviews are supposed to be conducted? Is supposed to be done before the beginning of the next fiscal year, right? So.
Yeah.
That's the goal. The goal will be to have the raiders complete it by, I think, the 24th.
Are the ratings public?
The report will be.
The responses are not, are, are they accessible via FOIA?
They're going to be aggregated. They're going to be, um, be done and be the custody, in the custody of Bob Joyce's firm. And they'll issue a, a report to us.
And they're anonymous, right?
And they're anonymous, yes. That's the whole point of doing it that way, yes.
But they're not accessible with FOIA?
My understanding is that they would not be, that they would be part of a personnel file and that whatever the report is that I as chair, you know, write up and deliver in the public meeting, in the open meeting, that would be discoverable. That would be in public domain. Yeah.
Okay.
So there'll be a summary report of whatever comes into them from council. So they're the only ones that are going to put eyes on this, on the actual responses.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page here, just.
Yeah, that, that was clear. Thank you.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second, I think. Who seconded?
I'll forget.
Okay. So a roll call vote. Mariano?
So I'm okay with the goals. I'm not okay with the 360. I'm, I'm, I haven't been convinced that it can be done in a, in a fair way, but so, but I'll vote, whatever. I mean, I'll abstain, I guess.
Well, we could do a vote just on the goals. Why don't we?
Okay.
Table the first motion. I'll take a, just a motion on the goals, to affirm the goals.
So I move that we confirm the goal, prior year goals for the town manager.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Yep. Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so we could bundle the other two things to move forward with the town manager's evaluation, having done part of it already, and adding this 360 review will be anonymous and aggregated through Bob Joy's firm.
So moved.
I'll get.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I'm glad we're going to wrap this up and do this for Lisa. All right, I think that's it. At 11 o'clock. No, 10:57.
Okay, I'll be quick. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Lisa and Stacy and.
Thank you all.
Good night.